Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, not only would like to, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And will the clerk please read the, or call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Happily here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, okay, well good, we have a lot of happy people. Welcome, everybody. Let's, Bill, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes in the order?
Just a notice that J. and L. will be pulled for discussion from consent.
Okay, J. and L.
And Mayor, did we want to dedicate this meeting? How did you want to do that?
Yes, we will be adjourning in the meeting in honor, but Randy, would you like to?
No, no, I just, I wasn't sure how, when you wanted to do that.
Okay, we, in our community, we have a lot of, you know, wonderful citizens and some characters, and I'm sorry to report that we have lost one of our leading citizens, Chris Hilger, who passed away. He is, I always think of Chris as somewhere between, you know, the pioneering spirit of moving mountains, and he and his family literally can move mountains, or did, the company, and sort of a Norman Rockwell view of how the world should be. And he lived his life that way, and while you could have disagreements with Chris, he was always the gentleman. So we will be adjourning in the meeting this evening in his memory. Okay, going back to the consent agenda, what do you say you're gonna, you want to pull?
We're gonna pull for discussion J. and L., I believe.
J. and L. Okay. Are there any other changes?
No.
Okay, if not, the agenda is approved as amended, and we will go to presentations. We have several presentations tonight, and Brian, you're gonna come up and join me in this as we are recognizing people for their work on the Historic Preservation Commission. So I'm gonna come around, and I think you have the order?
I do.
Okay.
I do. Is this on? So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. This is to recognize those folks who were recommended and approved by the Council for the annual Historic Preservation Awards, and then we have two recipients that are receiving lifetime Historic Preservation Awards. So first up, Mayor, we would like to bring up Elizabeth Rose and David Temple. If they would come up, please. They are the ones that put together the book From the Fire, and were recognized because of the varied and important oral history interviews that are included in this fine book throughout. So, thank you both very much, as well as many other things. So if you could come over, we'll... Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. That's wonderful. Let me, Sherri was, so, are you getting the next one? Just real quick, each of the commissioners this year ended up doing a biography for each of the individuals, Elizabeth Rose and David Temple. There is a complete biography in the notes of the Historic Preservation Commission. I encourage you to look at those. The contributions of the individuals that we'll talk to today are extensive and important in the preservation of Ojai as Ojai. So, next up would be our recipient Cindy Convery. Cindy is also a Historic Preservation Commissioner. She is not here tonight. She had the OW Robertson House that she worked in, that was made a historic landmark quite a while ago, and just recently, and as of tonight, hopefully, fingers crossed, will be our newest landmark. So, again, the... Okay, I sure will. She'll be back in town on Thursday, so I'll make sure and see her. Thank you, Mayor. That is gonna slide. Okay, the next person that we would like to bring up is Thais Quinn. Thais is also a Commissioner with the Historic Preservation Commission. She also has the distinction of having two of her properties that are City of Ojai landmarks, Arbolaata Number House A.
And, um, three, four, Aliso.
The Aliso Street Adobe, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that my husband participated in all of this, too.
Yes. There we go. So, here. So, those three are the annual historic landmark awards, Historic Preservation Awards, that have been granted by the City Council. The next award that we're presenting is a lifetime Historic Preservation Award. There are three people that have received this. Julie Tumamite is one, David Mason, I'm wearing David's bracelet that I wear when I bring David to a meeting, number two. Last year, we recognized Terry Hill as a lifetime achievement award, and this year we would like to bring Craig Walker up to recognize Craig. Again, Craig, and is one of those bios that are in our thing that you would be, would be quite interested to see the different things that he's been involved in, but I think most of us know about him bringing back Ojai Day as kind of his feather in his cap. So, thank you, Craig. And last, I would like to bring up, I know it's mentioned in the bio, but I'm not going to, how old this individual is, but I can tell you that she is recognized on the, on the board that's there at the Nordoff Gym for her years playing tennis at Nordoff High School, right? And so, and she also was involved, and very involved, in the Historic Preservation Commission and its multiple names over the first 30 years of its existence. So, we'd like to bring Rose Boggs up and recognize Rose.
Congratulations, Craig. I asked her, she was here. She said yes, hopefully.
So, again, a big thank you to...
Can I get a picture of Craig with Rose?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, come on, Craig.
Craig, if you can come up?
Absolutely. They wanna say anything?
There's a lot of oral, that's a lot of history in those two models.
Yeah, yeah.
Rose.
Come back, Rose, come back.
Not gonna let you go, Rose.
Well, congratulations to all the recipients, and we have two of the great historic tour leaders in Rose and Craig. You wanna hear all about the days of the old hotel and the mob? I recommend you take the tour. Okay, where are we? We are now in presentations, and I think we have presentations, is that, is that right, James?
Fire Safe Council?
Fire Safe Council. Chris Danch, come on down, Chris.
Thank you. There we go, look at that. You like that? Like that PowerPoint right there? Yeah, right here, out there, yes. Good evening.
Amazing, yeah.
Council members, and thank you for having me. This is, what we're doing and presenting tonight is a very big, sort of heady topic, and so we're gonna have to go through it pretty quickly. Some of you have already heard at length, Jim and James, and everybody else has done this, but we're gonna go through some of stuff pretty quickly, on a few slides. I also have with me two other members of our working group, and that's Dr. Andrea Neal here, she'll be talking a little bit. In the back is Celine Moomi, who is the Ventura County Fire Department pre-fire specialist is on our group as well. Fire Safe Council, just to be very brief, we've been here for almost 20 years, quietly doing a job of vegetation management, education, and other projects, and then this year, we have sort of switched path. We're all familiar with the hazards that face Ojai, we're in a very high or high severity fire zones, we have rough terrain, we have chapparrel, but most interesting, I'll point to one statistic there, is that 89% of our buildings are pre, of a building stock is pre-2009, so prior to fire codes that are the most effective. So, we do have a lot of vulnerable structures in our, in our area. We're also in a communication dead zone, and we have, because we're in a load pocket, where you have grid vulnerability. Thomas Fire, as we said before, the Thomas Fire and the other fires of 2017 and 18 have showed us that we sort of have a new kid on the block in terms of what can happen here. And I think that one of the lessons, of course, from the Thomas Fire is then the Paradise Fire, is that it could have been a lot worse. So, mention, with some things...
The winds die down at just the right time.
Right, and the right direction, too. So, we're looking at a, at a comprehensive risk mitigation strategy, and you have to take the following things into account, which are very important. One, of course, is that fire is inevitable and necessary for ecosystem help in the chapparrel and the coastal shrub. A very small percentage, less than 5% of our fires are deemed to be uncontrollable, and they're not defensible on the front, the Thomas Fire being an example of that, as was the Paradise Fire. But what's interesting is that this very small percentage causes 95% or so of the damage and loss of life and property. So, the traditional approaches of vegetation management, defensible space, those types of things are, they're still valid, but in the face of this 2%, they're not enough, and those things get overwhelmed very rapidly. And so, to protect against those fires that do all the damage, then we have to have protection that is more community-based and more community-driven, on top of the good work already done by our public safety agencies, and that's hardening our homes and preparing ourselves before, have better systems in place to respond as a community during the fire, and then have both short and long-term recovery processes in place. That means we're more resilient. Whoops, I put the wrong way. I didn't said I would do that. We do have, the major documents that are in place are very common in communities in California. One is the Unit Strategic Plan, which is a good plan, and then the 2010 Community Wildfire Protection Plan, done by the Fire Safe Council here in Ojai for the county. But those things have their limitations, and we won't go through those in great length, but the sort of the interconnection at the community level is missing from those plans because they aren't, from an agency perspective. And what we're trying to do here is not to go against those plans, but to coordinate with and complement those plans. So we have launched, the Fire Safe Council, a new initiative we call the Wildfire Risk Mitigation Strategy for the Ojai Valley area. Nice short title. The first thing we're doing to make this happen is to prepare what we call the roadmap, and the roadmap is a elaborate plan to make a plan. And then we have some primary goals, which I won't dwell on because we're gonna move right along. We can go back there, but, you know, I can see the whole thing going, well, Chris, we're running out of time, or what am I doing here? This is what I wanna do. Stupid button. Not, not my fault it's going the wrong direction. So the roadmap itself provides a variety of things, so we're obviously, obviously looking at project development, project sequencing, the priority of those things, a funding plan. A big part of it is a stakeholder analysis, so we look at who the stakeholders are, we sort of categorize them, and then we have a strategy to engage them. And that list has grown to almost 140 individuals, organizations, agencies, all categorized in different ways on how they're gonna be addressed, so we can be systematic in that, because that's always a lot, a big labor-intensive aspect of what we're doing here. And then we're also looking at how we're gonna fund all of this from a variety of sources, including public-private partnerships, deliver some preliminary action plans, and we have some first-year projects starting in 2020 that we'll talk about briefly here. The roadmap is being done by the core working group, two of the members already introduced. It is a diverse group of professionals, and I have to say, from the person who organized the group, that I am very happy with the efforts they've put in and the good work they've done, and know that these people, almost all of them volunteers, have worked, you know, at least five hours a week since September on this, on what we've done, and a lot of homework in between. So in doing this, we have, using a variety of methodologies, so we have, you know, gap analysis and that kind of stuff going on in terms of what's out there, and plans and studies and information. We have a number of disaster field techniques that our consultant Darlene has brought in. The people of the Disaster Council met Darlene in that presentation. An important thing to remember is that it's an iterative and nonlinear process, so it does take a great deal of management, and it does, it is going to evolve and morph over Not just with this initiative, but through the last 20 years, the Fire Safe Council has built a number of effective partnerships all throughout the county and Ojai Valley area, and they will, of course, be drawn upon for this plan. We have been here, last council meeting, talking about the survey that we're putting out. We are getting responses, it's a little slower than we had hoped, so we're gonna try to push some more on that, but what's coming out of that, when you start to take those responses and code them, very interesting data comes out. So we're very hopeful that we get more responses, because the more we get, obviously, the better this information is. But it will inform how we do things. For example, in an evacuation plan, looking at, for CDEC, for evacuation centers at the community level, looking at what, what's coming out of this is that people, you can't assume one car per household. Given these answers, you're looking at two or three cars per household leaving in evacuation. That completely alters the load on the highways. So without that demographic information, it's very difficult to project those loads. That'd be just an example.
Huge.
And then looking at what we're doing here in terms of structural hardening and people response, how they've prepared, and we're getting where there is a low level of that actually going on, and much room for where we have to go. And then we're utilizing other tools such as a cause and effect tree analysis, and what this allows us to do, and I think you, Jim, you studied that for a while at the Disaster Council meeting, it's kind of fun just tracing all those lines, isn't it? What that helps us do is by identifying causes and effect, then we can then identify and prioritize projects to have the greatest effect. Though the roadmap is not ready, though will be, should be completed by the end of January of 2020, we have a range of conceptual projects we have done, and some are ready to initiate in 2020, and we're gonna go look at a couple snapshots of that.
Hey, wait, what's a goat superhighway?
We put 'em in these little cars. You can teach a goat how to drive, by the way, they're great with a stick. Anyhow, but the point, the goat superhighway is the fact that we have a continuous band devised, and have to go to all the clearances to do that, and permissions and stuff, but by allowing the goats to do a continuous pattern, and this has been done before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very person who's done this did it up north in Marin, making continuous thing, because one of the biggest expenses of grazing programs is animal transport. Okay, so if you can put 'em on the ground and move them, and only pick 'em up once or twice, you've gone a long ways toward reducing the cost of that program, also a lot less greenhouse gas emissions and everything else going on.
Yeah.
But that's the goat highway, is that allows for continuous grazing in a pattern around the valley through the areas that have been identified as priority areas, and we've been declared to do that. Obviously, it takes a long time to get that going. I think someone put that highway right in my neighborhood. It is right behind my house right now.
Let's remember that when we do the animal ordinance. Yeah.
Okay, in, the interest of time, I have no idea what, how long this is going on, I'm sorry, because I've already changed what I practiced. Community microgrid, we talked, we've talked about that before. We're in a load pocket, we're looking at doing a community microgrid plan for critical facilities, we're seeking funding to do that. That begins with a solar siting survey, which leads to community microgrid optimum prep, you know, clustering, and then we'll look at the designs after that, after pre-feasibility. So, that's in the works, and we're looking at applications beyond what ordinarily people think, in terms of where, what was a critical facility, both for preparation, response, and recovery. And with that, we have, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Neal, and followed by Celine after that.
I'm the short one of the group. I just wanna tell you guys how great it's been to work with these fellow citizens on this project. I've learned so much about fire safety that I didn't know, from everything from single pane windows to not having wooden fences next to my house. And I've learned a lot about our community and what we can do as a community to not only be fire resilient, but climate resilient, and they are not two separate things, they are actually very intertwined. One of the key identified solutions to some of our problems with both evacuation, lack of water resources, communication, and choices during fires, was a community disaster evacuation center. And I find this a really neat project because it not only provides these resources for our community, but also provides resources for our schools. So the idea, which is pretty simple, is that at every school, we would have them be completely independent from electrical grids, so they would have solar and battery storage, they would have water wells on sites that have water capacity for sustainable water extraction that would be on solar and battery, battery storage, and they would have satellite communication systems. And we would also help prep the schools and provide, through the sale of water, the infrastructure and personnel to manage these CDEC sites. What's nice about this is what we saw were more people were evacuating at different times. It gives choices for first responders to move people in strategic manners, it gives people places to go for information, so instead of calling a relative, like I did in the Thomas Fire in Seattle, they can go to one of the CDEC sites and find out what needs to happen and what they need to do for their community. And it's a place that's already set, people know where, where it's at. So, this was something that we came up that I think is really interesting, and it's also something that, once it's up and going, it doesn't need continued grant support. Already, in the last week, I have received 125 grand of in-kind donations for this CDEC project. So it is one that businesses are willing to support, and it's one that our community's willing to support. And Celine? Did I go the wrong way? I went the wrong way. There we go.
Where's the grazer?
Hello.
Hi.
Well, Chris already talked about some of this that I was gonna talk about, that's okay. That's okay.
And I'm sorry, you are.
Oh, excuse me, Celine Moomi with Ventura County Fire Department.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I'm just here to talk a little bit about the prescribed grazing program, the goat superhighway that we had talked about.
Yay.
That's going on behind your home.
It is.
I saw it, actually, which is funny. I live over there, too. So, this is designed, like Chris said, after another successful program in Marin County, and it's funded through the donations, I think they call it Goat Fund Me, which is something we had looked at.
Oh, that's so cute.
It's cute. And also grants. And this is just a, you know, kind of the, the area, then they're doing fuels reduction around the communities. The prescribed grazing for fire prevention, it's ecologically pretty sound, I mean, it depends on, it's prescribed, so it would be, if you're using sheep, then you would be using those for grasses, if you're using goats, it would be more for brush. So the people who are putting this program together are students of this and teachers, and they really know what they're doing to prescribe this grazing program around the Ojai Valley. You can get rid of invasive species, like the star thistle, it's great to help with that, and other, like mustard and different things, so it's a really good way to do that. It also changes the way a fire burns. So, if a fire's burning and it hits a big fuel reduction like this, it just, it can take it from a really hot, fast-moving fire to a grass fire, and it just changes the fire profile. Let's see, what else do we have here?
And when are we starting this? Like yesterday?
Hopefully soon. Well, you know, in Ventura County, we do have a couple of prescribed grazing areas, but this would be different, and then it would be not just, you know, just a site, it would be continual all the way around, and it would be more prescriptive as well to what we need, as, as far as the health of our ecosystems here in Ojai. And then the reduced emissions would be from, you know, not trucking them around, and then also, you're not using mechanized equipment as well to do this fuels reduction, and the carbon sequestration. And then also, it talks about the new jobs in Ojai, this could be, and I'm not, this isn't my specialty, this part of it, but it would be, they're talking fiber and food with these new jobs, as well as, you know, shepherds and...
Dog trainers?
Dog trainers, and all, all the rest of the stuff that goes with that.
Great.
So, yeah, I think that's it.
One question, is there a map corridor already for this highway, or is that part of a proposed strategic initiative or something?
It's part of the proposed, in other words, it's a combination of mapping out where this can go, where the animals can be accommodated, and where they can do some good, along with permissions from property owners and things like that. So it's a whole process.
And neighbors.
One thing that people don't realize, if properly managed, and the prescribed is, is not just the animals, also, it's also the number of animals and the length they're, the time they're in any one spot. One thing that a lot of people don't realize is that when you properly graze animals with that kind of knowledge and ecological sensitivity, they actually improve the health of the grassland and the soils. And if you improve the health of soils, then you improve water retention, you improve lower fire intensity and, and flammability. So it has, you know, over the long run, it can have profound effects. The person who's directing the program for us has been doing this for many years, I've actually, I've followed this young woman for 10 years, since I met her in New Mexico, and she has done a remarkable job and brings a great deal of expertise and experience. She's worked with Cal Fire in the Marin County and, and has authored studies with them as well on this very subject. So, what we're coming down to is that the, the interim roadmap is only mentioned because out of this has come these conceptual projects of which we can begin. The grazing program, for example, will begin in January, in terms of public outreach, fundraising, crowdfunding, this kind of stuff to get it going. We, and our director of that project, Cole Bush, has experience in doing that as well. And then the final roadmap is to be completed by the end of January, and then it'll be ready to present in February. We do expect to be back, we've been talking about what that is, what it means. It's already quite an involved document, so that's what's going to happen, and we believe that we have a strategy that is not only gonna work, but it's gonna be fundable, and many aspects of it will be revenue generating and therefore self-sustaining. And we look forward to working with the city and having the city's support behind this, this important initiative. So with that, we thank you, and take any questions that you want.
I have a question. I, I know that Dr. Neal gave a presentation at the Ojai Retreat, and there have been some small meetings, but are you planning like a town hall? Because, so that's, that's in the works?
Yes.
Yeah.
When, when the roadmap is finished, it's quite a bit behind that, and there's this very segment, very different parts of it, too. very different parts of it too, and how they interrelate. So we'll have a series of town hall presentations to do that. Because once we get past the core working group, that it's going to expand into committees that are going to have to do this, do this work because it's beyond any small number of people to carry this out.
And then you mentioned that you didn't have much response yet from the survey.
Yeah.
Have you done it through the school system?
Well, I can talk to... We have gone through the school system. Of course, there's a banner flying through the homepage of the Ojai County News. We put out ads.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and we've, we've run ads and I've contacted groups. Obviously, I and others are going to have to go back and make a bigger push because we really do want more. It is important information. And we're kind of looking at a minimum of 500 responses. That's 500 households, which is about 1,000 to 2,000 people, depending on how you average the households. But it would be remarkable if we could get 1,000. That would provide some really useful information on how we do this.
Chris, thank you for doing this. And if you've been doing it for 20 years, God bless you.
I haven't. I start with the council in January.
So I have, you know, it's interesting. The awareness of fire in this community only happens when the winds are blowing or there's extreme heat. I think we knew as a community, we need to do something that actually puts us on an annual basis that we think and react and be more aware of our surroundings, where we live, how we live. I don't know, I don't know how to do that, but you know, I work in Rancho Matilla. And I know on an annual basis, they do a yellow ribbon thing where you have to demonstrate that you're ready for a fire. And a group of their citizens goes around and just ensures you've got water and food and all of the other necessities. I don't know why we don't try and do that as a community because if it can be done there, it should be able to, we should be able to do something like that citywide. And we just put that on our calendar. That's what we're going to do that day, that month. And we're going to do it. And that just creates an awareness that's around us all the time. So I think that's important. The other one, you had talked about the unit strategy plan. And how can, how can we bring, how can we bring some of the stuff that you're doing for hardening of our, of our community to planning and our building the safety? How can we do something in conjunction with what you're doing? So as you investigate the science and you look at, you know, all the remedies, instead of you sitting on them or trying to disseminate them through the community on your own, how can we bring that into City Hall and actually start encouraging our planning and our building the safety to start looking at these things?
I think what we're gonna, it's a good question, and that's actually something that's gonna be addressed in the plan. But what we're looking at doing is first, we are bringing in people to do training for volunteers. Might have to arrange some kind of stipend because this is actually a lot of work. But being training to do what we call structure ignition potential assessments. And they go out and they take a look at houses and they look at the whole setting. And there's very specific training to go do this. And they're doing it down south. And so we take that. We want to look at how do we take the data that's coming off of this and start to gather it. One of the things we propose to do is to start with a smaller community and sort of refine the whole methodology and how we're going to do this. And we've kind of picked Foster Park to do that because it's a place that needs that work. And actually, the community members of Foster Park came to us and asked us for our help. And one of them, Piper Presley, is on our, is on our working group. And so that while we help that community, we're going to refine our own methodologies and how we're going to do this, get this kind of data. How, and then how are we going to scale it up? So we can do more sections of homes to get the kind of data we need. We can bring that to you guys in the planning level about how this can be done. And also, if we have the capacity to do this, then there is money out there to support these things in terms of retrofits, but also support an effort to modify buildings, building a safety. So that's the, it's the data first, then the plan, and then bring it to you and have you something that you can base, you know, the proper ordinance change on.
Mayor, I have just two more small questions.
Does that make sense?
You're a 501. That's what I heard.
Yes.
Okay, and again, I know it's something that we as a council should look at is how we can support you better. I don't know what funding mechanism that we presented in the past, but I think in next year's budget, we need to really look at that.
I appreciate that.
Because you are, you are really doing as much for us as you are for the county, and we need to recognize that. The other thing is, any information...
Get your request ready.
Huh?
Get your request to us.
The other thing is, any information that you have, we have a website. And I would think that we would want to share that with you and allow you to disseminate as much information as you can. In fact, I'd be looking forward to seeing how, as a council, we could get what you have right now so that we can start getting up to date on it. And I know the mayor sits on your, on your, does, Mayor, do you sit?
No, we have, the city has a disaster council, of which Chris participates with us.
Okay, yeah. Because I'd be, again, if you could post your meetings, I think it would be, I'm sure all of us would be interested in attending and at least gathering as much information and insight as to what you're doing, how you're doing it, when and where, and what we can do. So we look forward to that.
Oh, and we will do that. Appreciate that. And we, we do have some small amount of funding too to sort of amp up our own kind of, our website presence and our social media presence, which has been, this has been a steady, well-run, kind of quiet 501(c)(3), doing its work without raising a bunch of stuff. Now, this is a new initiative that has put, has taken ourselves to a new level in how we do things.
It's very important work.
So we, it's a little scary sometimes too. So, so yes, we, you know, obviously, we, the partners with the city and other key stakeholders is something that we need to do, and we really appreciate that support. And Bill will get that ask in. And then, but also when we have the roadmap completed, we'll have a much more complete picture of where we're going and things like budget details and narratives and things like that for the projects. But if you don't have all of that, you know, we've done a great deal of work and starting from scratch, but we, we're, it's, it's an evolving process for us.
Well, I imagine you're interacting with police, you're interacting with fire. You've got to be touching all the bases of fire prevention in this community.
Okay, do you have any more questions? All right. Running into public comments.
All you people just go home now.
Chris, thank you very much for all the work you're doing. We'll see you probably in January, right?
All right.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Yeah, right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now at the public comment, and I have some cards, I think.
There you go.
Here we are. Jeff. And my good buddy Jack, you're, I got a card from you for your next up, right? Jeff?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Otterby, and I live in Miners Oaks. I am here this evening because I'm concerned about our climate. And I don't know what else to do about it but come and talk with you a little bit. I had a dream the other night that woke me up. And it was something like this. The earth was on fire. And a bell rang, and a bunch of people showed up with buckets, like a bucket brigade to put out this fire, right? And in their buckets, the whole community showed up, and in their buckets, they had, some people had like the ability to plant trees. Some people had ideas about solar energy. Some people had composting ideas. Some people were into gardening. All these different ideas that helped with putting out this fire, people were there doing it. And I was super impressed. And I thought, wow, this is cool. Maybe we can get this going in our community. Bucket Brigade. And a bucket brigade starts by ringing the bell. Somebody's got to ring the bell for people to show up. And that's why I'm here in front of you. I think that part of your responsibility is to ring the bell. And I know you have been, and that we've declared a climate emergency. And that's part of the bell. The bell has to get a little bit louder. We have to really ring the bell so people hear it so that our community pulls out their buckets. Because they've all got buckets. We've all got ideas. We just all got to show up. So you just mentioned about with the fire people that we could put that on our website. Or we could put ideas on the website from you, coming from you, some ideas from the city. Here's how we can deal with some of these problems. I don't know what else to say. How else can you ring the bell? I'd love you to ring the bell louder. And I'm going to try and ring the bell, and hopefully the community's going to show up.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jack Weber with Patty, you're on deck.
I'm a poet, but Chris is going to beat me out in the poetry department tonight. I had a bit of a scathing testimony tonight. I'm sorry. And my friend Ray Powers has encouraged me to tone it down a bit, so I have, so you don't get the bonus version. But I'm going to deliver anyway. So six months ago, we passed a climate emergency ordinance. Since that time, from what I know, we've done little to nothing to reduce our emissions in the valley. This is disturbing for a small progressive town. Months ago, I was worried that this was all superficial to look good on paper. I've been concerned this would not move quickly enough. I've been concerned, as I testified months ago, that the issue of severity is too new for you all to take, to take it to heart for it to sink in deep enough. I was concerned that you and we would not step up to the plate to live outside the box and not only pass regulations, but set a national and maybe even a global example. Because we have that capability here in Ojai, and we have to leverage it. Tonight, I'm afraid I was correct. Climate science over the last month has reported serious new developments in the crisis, including tipping points we may have already passed beyond which we cannot recover. The oceans are more devoid of oxygen and warmer than we once thought. And the ice caps, glaciers, and permafrost are melting at more rapid rates than expected. Sea level is now expected to rise higher and faster than previously thought. The Amazon is ever closer to the point of no return. And wildfires are tearing across Australia, the Amazon, and Africa at ferocious rates right this moment. But I'm tired of, I'm tired of reporting the news to you. I don't think there's much more I can say. I respect what you've done, yet we have to do more. I also hope it's not because we've been too polite that you don't take us seriously enough. We need to start acting outside the box of normal legislative protocol because this is all going way too slowly. And climate emergency doesn't abide our plodding pace. Maybe you've seen me and the youth of Ojai out on the streets, striking with some of the other people in this room as we were all Sunday afternoon. This is what we're doing with our free time. If you're serious about climate crisis, and if you want to respect the sacrifices being made by us here in Ojai, out on the streets, especially the youth who showed up in numbers on Sunday. And if you want to give them hope, let's get a fire under our butts to pick up the pace and get climate emergency on the agenda first thing, every meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. Patty, you're up, and Tina, you're on deck.
Good evening. I just want to add my support for what Jack and Jeff were talking with us all about. I know that the soil is very important in all of this too, and we have to get off the pesticides and herbicides because that is part of the whole problem too. We need healthy soil to sequester the carbon, and that can help us a lot in this whole climate emergency. I know that you did receive in your emails my letter, and I just wanted to point out that last night, Malibu City was able to pass a complete ban on all pesticides, herbicides, and rodenticides. And it is because they have a special designation being in the local, in the, they have a local coastal plan in the California, the coastal plan there. So if we were able to do something like that, we'd have to get rid of the preemption law. But as it is now, what we need to do is get the earth-friendly management plan in place. I'm hoping that we can get that on the agenda in January and have that passed. And that would just have to do with city property. And I wanted to really point out that we have to get rid of the little black boxes with the rodenticide poisons in there. They're all over the city still, even though the city has told me that they use only the organic friendly pellets in there, which still may not be the total answer. It's supposed to be safe for a secondary kill. I mean, it's supposed to not have secondary kill effects. But I've also heard that when the Ojai Pest Control runs out of that particular organic product, they start telling people that bromethylene is a safe choice, and it is not a safe choice. It is very poisonous to all animals. All wildlife, cats and dogs, die from this fast track that may be used. And it, it's just, we have to get rid of these black boxes. The city of Malibu has done it, so many other cities all around, around the country, and the universities that I gave you a list of, a few, what was last, I think last time around that I was here. So I'm just asking for us to move on this as well. And if we can get on the agenda in January, I'd really appreciate that. And please help, help in the effort to make sure that there are no more black boxes where that poisons are put in. Because there are ways of handling the rodent problem without poisons. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. Tina, you're up, and Natasha, you are on deck.
Hi, I just wanted to come and say thank you tonight because, and I wanted to make sure that I said thank you on behalf of Ramona also. We really appreciate the installation of the stop signs going down Ventura Street. And we really appreciate you all being responsive to our concerns. We also wanted to let you know that we've had five accidents that we've counted since November 18th. But what's most concerning is that two of those accidents were not reported through CHP. So we're into a problem where we're trying to push on county to make a change, and not only are they looking at data sets through Tims or whatnot, but that the data sets, even at the highest or most accurate level with Switter's report, is still not capturing some of these accidents. So one was a spinout on December 3rd at Rancho Royale. And if it's across the street from Rancho Royale, you'll see the sign that's pushed over, and it's all tweaked in the soil right there. Someone crashed at about nine o'clock at night, and Bree heard it, but her husband's whatever, so she needed to not go out. But it was a hit and run. They spun around, took out a sign, and left the scene. Also, on November 28th, so we had an accident turning out from Creek Road onto Highway 33. We had a broadside there on November 20th. And we understand that there was another one on November 28th where that person left the scene also. And you can kind of tell that there was other debris on the right-hand side. So I just wanted to bring to your attention, but most importantly, thank you for your action because we really need it when we're still like battling over how many accidents, who's responsible for it or whatnot. The speeding and the passing has gotten to a point where it's, it's increasing really a lot. And we are only seeing Sheriff's Department out there patrolling as much as they can. CHP is absent.
Okay, Randy, do you have something?
I have a question for Captain Fryhoff. Does the public have a right to turn in these, make a report on these accidents that maybe a sheriff or a police officer hasn't responded to? And if they can, what are the procedures?
Yeah, if you witness or you hear a car accident, and you can call, and we will respond. Oftentimes, because of our remote nature and the, and the few Ohio Patrol officers that are typically out and about, we would be the ones that respond because of an extended ETA by the Ohio Patrol. If we get there, then we'd have an opportunity to see if there was a vehicle there or if there was any damage, and then we could have it reported as a hit and run. Also, if...
And then, I'm sorry, Jim, and then at that point, that would be... And then, I'm sorry, Jim, and then at that point, that would be, that would be recorded to the, is it Tims? Is that what I'm hearing?
Switters is the CHP and Sheriff's Department.
If, if, if an accident report is generated, then it goes into Switters for sure. We would most likely take the general information and then pass it off the highway patrol, especially if it was a hit and run for them to follow up on.
Okay.
So, and that can still be done, right?
But likely, that's not going to record as an accident, from my understanding. They'll take a report, but they're not, it will not record as a, as a recorded accident. Which is why we document, right? When Ramona and I see accidents, hear accidents, and we have a network of all of our neighbors. We get a phone call, run out to go photocopy it. I have a bumper and a-
So, so the question there is, is just procedure. So if, if this, if there's a loss of property, whether it's personal or, or private or, um, county, they'll make a report based on that, a stop sign this ran over, or a speed sign this ran over, or?
They should.
Okay.
Okay, Ryan, you have a question?
Yeah, Chief, is there, um, is there an alarming rate of hit and runs on Creek Road? I mean, is that a known problem? Because we've talked about all these things, but I haven't heard, you know, I know, I assume some of our hit and runs, but I don't know what the frequency is.
Well, and I, and likewise, right? We don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, right.
So I don't know how many unreported hit and runs have occurred, because they didn't, nobody reported it. Um, the people that live there, like Tina, are aware of what's happened, because they see the signs, they see, they hear the accident, and then the next morning they wake up and they see damage, and, and one could then assume that there was a hit and run there. I don't know that there's an alarming rate, but clearly there's, um, there's a lot of traffic on Creek, right? There's no doubt there's a lot of traffic on Creek. I've heard the county's explanation of, um, they wanna use, the, the road is not a private drive. It's not a residential street, and their interests are in moving commerce, not slowing commerce. And so I've heard the discussion that they've had with Tina about not wanting to put stop signs in. They did put a, a section in of, of a lower speed now, uh, for a seg- a segment of it. I'm still waiting for the delineators to go up on the, uh, the stretch that's the straightaway that there's a lot of passing on. And the sad thing is, I mean, I drive that road twice a day, every day, minimum, and there's people that pass, like, on the, the curves. Not just a straightaway. I mean, there's people who've gone head-on into me on curves, and of course, I have the ability to pull them over, which I do. Because, because I'm not driving a big police car, I'm driving an unmarked car. I'm driving a company car. It's unmarked, but it's got lights and sirens on it, and I write tickets just as good as anybody.
Okay, well, thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina.
Uh, Natasha, are you out there? Come on down.
Hello, my name's Natasha RC. I'm a high schooler here in Ojai, and I'm an active member of my school's environmental club, Extinction Rebellion Ojai, and the Green Schools Coalition. All of these organizations have been doing their best to fight climate change on a local level, but we could really use more of the city's support. I think that declaring climate emergency was an essential step towards climate justice. However, I do not think that enough action has been done since then. Ojai has the opportunity to be a model city, and that is something we need to take advantage of. Climate change is a pressing issue, and change needs to be happening much quicker than it currently is. Some ideas are reducing single-use plastic, educating the youth more at schools, planting more trees, building more bike lanes, et cetera. I'm extremely concerned about this emergency, and I think that we need to do everything we can to prevent disaster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all the cards I have under public communication. Our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We pulled a couple of items, so-
A motion to move second.
With the exception of J.
J and I.
Uh, is it J and I or K and L?
J and L, J and L.
Okay, I got a motion. You have a second?
Yes.
Okay, is there any objection? If not, so ordered. Uh, okay, Bill, were you the one that pulled J?
Yes, and I was like, just to, as a, just out of courtesy to, I believe, um, uh, our, our school superintendent is here. I wanna answer a question about L. May we take up L first?
Right.
Okay, sure, that's fine. No, without objecting, yeah.
And I think Randy had some questions on L.
Well, Mike, is, uh-
We're doing L?
We're gonna do L first?
Yeah, we're gonna do L first. But my concern is that, that there was a, um, funding set aside, $5,000 for mending the Hoot mural on the, um, Ojai School District, uh, preschool wall. And I just needed to, and I, um, you know, that's a, thank you. That's a, um, well, it didn't get landmarked in the last process.
It got surplused.
It got surplused. And so my concern is, is, is there a, um, is there a better building to put a $5,000 mural on in the community?
So we are, this is part of our beautification process of the frontage of all of our schools. We understand the status of the property is not known at this time for the future, so we are, um, building it on aluminum foam, foam core board, and just mounting it to the wall, so it's not permanent, so that if we, something happens with that property in the future, we can move it to another location.
Okay, but, because that wasn't explained here in our, in our handout.
Would it be possible to put some sort of stipulation in the installation that basically there's notification to the city if there's any change of status, so that the public are can be moved?
Absolutely. The, the idea is we, we, that is our site that needs the most work at this exact moment. And so the idea is to put something there that's beautiful, that's accessible for students, but if it's no longer gonna be used there, to be able to move it to another site in the school district, we would be able to utilize it.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions on that item?
No, I just wanna say that the new paint looks beautiful, and it's gonna be incredible with a mural. It's perfect.
I, I think it'll be a really nice, visible spot, and we're excited to put some art there.
Yeah.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you.
So I, I'd like to move approval with the stipulation.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with the stipulation that, with the notification?
The notification.
Okay, uh, is there any objection? If not, so ordered. Now we'll go back to what, to J.
Yeah, real, real quick on that, um, and I wanna thank, um, Gail very much for sending the, I don't know, 200-page document on the Community Foresting Management Plan, which I actually went through. Uh, and it, and it became very clear, and I've talked to the city manager about this, that, that we need to update the Community Forest Management Plan. It is out of date. Uh, and so I would like to, to make a motion to approve item, uh, J with the following stipulations. Uh, one, that the application be amended to include in the current, uh, tree ordinance was established as August 2008 as amended in 2017. And also, if we could work on the in-kind contributions of management and volunteer time to, you know, we really are putting in more than $125,000 of effort, and it does count, and I think the volunteer and management time does not be incidental.
Yeah.
And then the third stipulation I would like to make in my motion for approval is that, um, the city manager designate someone to do a, as is required in the Community Forest Management Plan, is required for review and update every five years, which we have not done. It's due in 2019, that, uh, let's say, in three months, you'll come back to us with your designate coming back with a review and update on, on the community management forest plan.
All reasonable, agreed.
So those are mine.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Oh, a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, the, uh, and management feels they can be back in three months and everything, okay? Okay, if there's no further discussion, is there any objection to the motion? If not, so ordered, okay? Consent calendar is complete. We now go to, what, item number two, which is the nomination and election of a mayor pro tem, so.
Mayor, I would like to make a nomination, okay, to nominate, uh, Ryan Blatts as pro tem for the next year.
I'll second.
Okay.
And, uh, and the reasoning, and the reasoning behind that is, um, we've got a nice, um, way that we're doing it right now. It seemed like, uh, William was, uh, pro tem three years ago, then it was myself after him, and then Suz after him. So it just kinda fits right in, in a, in a, uh, really smooth rotation, that Ryan would be the ex appropriate person.
And he can be our, our baby pro tem, you know, the youngest.
Yeah, but I think, but, but-
Whatever that meant.
Yeah, okay, I think this is going downhill.
Thank you, baby. But I, what I do is, I just wanna say that, that by, um, moving Ryan to, uh, mayor pro tem, that we have now removed the status of youngin', in that he is, he is an adult in the community and will assume the adult, responsibilities as our new mayor pro tem.
I will do my best to behave as an adult from here forward.
Are there any other nominations? Any other campaign speeches, okay? If not, okay, well, can we do that by acclamation then?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, so, so ordered. Now, we're gonna have to, we'll change our, we'll have a little intermission and a rearrangement of, of chairs. I, I have promised Randy that we will take him out of that corner.
I'm moving from the corner.
I wanna be in that corner.
You're gonna get that corner.
Where do I go? All right, good.
Wait, do I stay here, or do I go?
Yeah, well, would you like to be a-
I don't care, I-
You're right, now, you're at the right hand.
I'll stay over here and then you're over there.
If Randy's not on the same side as me, are you still gonna call him Ryan all the time?
That's probably a good idea.
We might wanna switch, yeah.
Change here.
R and R.
Okay, the R and Rs will be on each side of me here.
Separate the Rs, okay.
Okay, um, so-
Thank you.
That action is taken care of, and the, uh, new seating chart will come after the intermission, okay? Let's see, where are we? We've got item number three. What is that, a very linked historic property agreement? You wanna take the break first, or do you wanna take it after this?
No, let's keep going.
Keep going, okay, very good. Okay, we're on item number three. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. This is, um, a fairly straightforward item as far as landmarks go. The item involves two separate but related items, a landmarking of the Estelle Clark House and the Mills Act Agreement for the Estelle Clark House. Uh, the property at issue, which is the Estelle Clark House, is a 1928 historic Austin Pierpont, uh, Pierpont Tudor-designed house. The resident is, uh, residence is the only example of a Tudor revival architecture with half-timbering in Ojai. Uh, it's the city's, it would be the city's 27th, uh, landmark designation. Uh, and the purpose of the landmark designation is to preserve and protect the, the landmark as having special historical character within the city. Besides the landmarking, there's also the Mills Act Agreement, which is a 10-year contract between the city and an owner, uh, which is renewed each year unless counse- canceled by either party. The Mills Act Agreement reduces the owner's property tax with the idea that that money could be used to maintain the historic aspects of the property. Historic aspects can include exterior and interior, uh, which in this case, both are included. Uh, in the, uh, resolution, there are illustrations of the historic aspects. Uh, the drawback to a Mills Act Agreement is that it does potentially cost the city some tax, uh, property tax revenue, but it is minor. Uh, probably typically a couple hundred dollars per million-dollar property. So, um, for the most part, there's, you know, supported by, uh, by the Historic Preservation Commission and staff. And in this case, the Historic Preservation Commission supported unanimously with those, uh, voting, so.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions of staff? If not, okay, the public hearing is open. I have one card. Brian.
In spite of, uh, traveling 11 hours from Atlanta to get here for that meeting, I was at the Y when Taiz, Vice Chair Taiz called and told me the meeting had concluded, if you can imagine.
And you were listed as a no-show. I saw that in the man-
What can I say?
Yeah, oh, no.
Not for a lack of effort, though.
My wife wanted me to drop her off at the house, and that cost me six minutes, or I would've made it. She's worth it.
Just mayor, just mayor along.
Are, are you for or against the?
So I stand here, so I stand here, even though I wasn't at the meeting, uh, physically, uh, and I was keeping City Manager Vega apprised.
Your progress?
Fully, yeah, my prog- progress airport, airport, my airport. I am fully in support of this. And, uh, Vice Chair Quinn, who was here behind me, was the one who conducted that meeting, and I did watch it today, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, are there any other? Okay, well, I guess we'll-
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am.
Oh, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion to, uh, uh, receive the resolution on the city of Ojai landmark designation for the Estelle Clark House as city Ojai historic landmark. Do we have a number?
27.
27. Located at 520 Foothill Road. Assessor's parcel number 020-0-040-030.
I'll second.
Can you repeat that? Yeah, no, please don't, yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And just to clarify, does the motion also include the approval of the Mills Act Agreement?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion on the motion? If not, uh, on this one, it involves money and taxes, so we have a roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, or Councilmember Francina?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
All right.
Okay, we are now on item number four, Steering Committee Recommendations for the Formation of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so, uh, this is, uh, we discussed this item at the November 12th council meeting, is, has been mentioned in public comment today. The city adopted a, uh, climate emergency which included creation of a climate emergency mobilization committee. We, um, received initial recommendations from the Steering Committee at the November 12th meeting. Council noted some concerns with some of the recommendations and asked for additional information. The committees reviewed and made some, um, modifications to their recommendations and are in attendance, actually, uh, for this meeting as well, if there's any questions. And in fact, requested the opportunity to speak for a moment. But, uh, I think some key issues that we talked about at that meeting were the scope, which is, um, focused on, um, high-impact, uh, climate mitigation actions, in recognition of the emergency nature of the climate crisis. And some other key issues are the duration and the type of public involvement. So those, uh, I, I, um, would suggest allowing the, uh, committee to speak about those issues.
Okay. Do we have someone from the committee, you say?
That's your cue.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to, to be here. Uh, a few months ago, you all individually appointed a member of the community that you felt had expertise and commitment and passion for the subject of climate. And, uh, the, the mission that we were given was to think through, how should the cities, uh, I'm gonna call it an entity for the moment, how should this committee or this entity be organized? Uh, how should it work? Uh, what should its mission be? What should its scope be? And, uh, basically, we, I'm, I want to give you a, a sort of sense of the process and the, and the way we went about our, arriving at our, our recommendations. Uh, as you know, a declaration is probably the most, or one of the most powerful actions that any governance or any leadership can take. Uh, because the very act of declaring, whether it's a declaration of war, whether it's a minister saying, "I pronounce you married," or whether it's a good, a judge saying you're guilty. It is a, it's a speech act that is intended to change reality in the moment it's spoken. It means stop business as usual, the situation is not precedent, and we must now do something very fundamentally different. So the committee, uh, took that as the begin, the beginning point in the challenge of how do we design an approach to being both responsive and also inclusive of the expertise and the, uh, people in the community that have something to do. So one of the, we, we outlined a series of principles that we wanted to use in our approach to design. Uh, so one of them was, we wanted to stand squarely in the middle of, we were there to design something in response to an emergency. Uh, secondly, and it wasn't necessarily, there's different kinds of emergencies. The house is on fire is one kind of an emergency. There's an imminent threat that it will be is another kind of an emergency. So, so our second principle really had to do with whichever way you cut it, and whatever your point of view about that is, that time is of the essence. So we wanted to design an approach that was not, uh, simply, uh, being a spectator or a commentator on the subject, but that was really focused, uh, very much like an extension of the city staff to produce a work product for the purpose of helping the council to accelerate making better and faster decisions. Uh, as a third principle, we said, we're not here to vote on our points of view about this subject. We're not here to process information. We're here to organize a mindset, a, a focus, and deliver recommendations to you that we can stand for. Uh, and in that sense, we agreed amongst ourselves, and the, the committee consisted of Brian Holly, Stephen Colomo, Michelle Levy, Phil White, and myself. And we decided we wanted to work as a, that we or whoever is going to be on this group should work as a team and come to resolve- should work as a team and come to resolution of an aligned point of view or recommendation. So whatever we had to say, or whatever the group that is the committee has to say, that it be a, an aligned conclusion. Even if there's disagreement in the committee, that by the time it gets to you, you have a unanimous expression of commitment, that this is what the city should do. We also recognized, however, there can always be alternative scenarios. So we also saw as part of the scope of this group, that it should be able to formulate where appropriate alternative scenarios or all competing points of view if it's a controversial kind of decision. One of the things about an emergency is that's, it demands almost unpopular, out-of-the-box, atypical kinds of decisions. Again, it's, it's a moment in time when business as usual is no longer acceptable. And that became, again, part of the guiding principles that we saw for this particular unity. We saw that the work product that we would deliver would be in the form of reports. We recommend that the committee, whatever form it takes, be a regular part of your agenda and that it be a continuing, evolving process. We also said that we, because of the nature of climate, as you heard in some of the earlier testimony or the earlier presentations, is a kind of meta-problem. It's, 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 if you want to, you could pretty much hook anything onto the word "climate" and it could become so broad that we end up with a lot of distinctions that don't make any difference. As such, that's why we recommended in the earlier report that we focus on the things that are most available to take action on in the community. And as a beginning, not necessarily the whole story, but that the committee focus on transportation, energy, and sequestration as a beginning point to engage the question of what kinds of changes, what kinds of commitments, what kind of actions can we take that could connect and in one way make a difference. We also recognize that in the community, we have a great many experts and people with a great deal of experience and maturity in a lot of different subjects. And so we saw that one of the working methodologies of this group could be inviting those individuals to participate in meaningful and hopefully powerful alignment-producing dialogue. Our, we have a strong commitment or believe that this group should have a strong commitment to community participation. And we make a distinction, however, between participation and commentary. And we are very committed that the group should have community participation. But that because time is of the essence and because the nature of the work product is creative and generative, it's not information gathering and reporting, that because of that nature, we recommended an ad hoc format so that we could engage people to participate without necessarily having to take the administrative time and activities and processes to invite commentary. But then even on top of that, we recommend the unusual approach that this committee should have some format, for example, a quarterly full day, which is inviting people to actually engage in real conversation. In conversations that are not simply lining up points of view, but that are actually trying to reconcile differences, conflicts, different approaches, and try to, again, become a catalyst within the community to build more alignment and consensus around various strategies and whatever the council should ultimately be deciding to do. We also think that the implementation of the council's decisions is probably as or more important than the decision. So in that sense, we also see that this group could become a vehicle, a voice, if you will, to hopefully accelerate and prioritize the implementation of the kinds of changes that this problem presumably will call for. I believe that's all I really wanted to say about it, other than for all of us that have been on this working group, it's been a privilege to participate. We did, at the end of the day, after, after we came to this realization, not only because of our passion for the severity of the problem, but also for the, the potential and the possibility that this kind of a different type of group might be for the city, that we all volunteered to be appointed, to be the committee that we had just designed. However, that's a different decision. So speaking to you, we agree that the idea of the council appointing individuals to such a group is a good idea and we encourage that you do that. So if you approve the design, in whatever format you design it, at least you have some volunteers saying that we're willing to participate further, if that's appropriate in your view. So anyway, that's, that's where we are and I welcome any questions or otherwise, I will sit back and see how you vote.
Okay, well, thank you, Jim, are there any questions?
Well, let me, sorry, I'd like to, if we, if we, if we want to close the public and then, and then have a discussion amongst us, but have Jim available or Michelle or?
I was going to say, Michelle and Phil are here, so I sent.
Are you, do you plan on staying? Jim, do you plan on staying?
I'll stay, sure.
Okay, do other members of the committee wish to, to speak at this point or?
No, I don't have anything to add, that was a great presentation, Jim, thank you.
Okay, okay. Here, here.
I will add one thought, you know, this is the first public group that I've ever seen that also said whoever's on this group needs to work as a team. This is not a collection of individual points of view. That the problem demands a different way of working and a different mood and a different focus and a kind of resolve that demands teamwork.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Shall we now take it back to the council for conversation? And the members of the committee are going to be around in case there are any questions, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I would second Phil's comment, and Jim, excellent presentation. And I mean, this is kind of uncharted waters that we're going into, trying to find a way in which to take it, to benefit from the knowledge in the community in a kind of a semi-informal way that does not end up with the bureaucratic costs associated and the other issues. So I think it's, the proposal to me is a good start.
This is uncharted water for humanity.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, there's a hand up in the audience.
Right, I thought we brought her back to council.
Okay.
Is there a card in, if I haven't seen?
No, there's no cards.
No, I just want to express my full support for everything you stated. My position is the same as it was at the last council meeting. I think this should remain as an ad hoc committee, give you free rein, no restrictions. We appointed you, you're all experts in climate, you know, you're passionate about climate emergency and everything you said just verifies my original thinking for this committee. I think one of the key things that you said is that you function in effect as an extension of staff. And to ask that the public be involved at this level would be, in my, to my way of thinking, would be similar if our city manager had to have a public hearing about every staff report. So, and it took me a while to fully under, to fully grasp that line of thinking, but now I see it very clearly now, that the public hearing part comes when we, when you bring, when we discuss implementing, implementing what you present to us.
The public is welcome to make comment at all the meetings when the reports come to us on our agenda and then anything that's proposed on the agenda to take action on, then again, has, the public has the right to comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask that, we just got our speaker card, I know it was from Severo Lara. I'd ask if the council's willing to entertain his, what he had to say.
Right, is any objection?
Yes, please.
Some late mail here, that's fine, I think we know.
The mail is stopped delivery at eight.
Right, okay.
But I'd like to, but only give him a minute and a half.
I'll be quick. Mayor Protem Blatz.
Thank you, Senator. Former mayor.
Congratulations, by the way, and congratulations, Chief. I do watch mostly every meeting, so I just rushed down here when it was close to the item. But I do want to, I did watch last meeting also on this issue and I just want to at least advocate my point of view of full support in terms of the ad hoc committee recommendation. I think it's really critical and I think that there's already a lot of opportunity for public comment. I do appreciate Councilmember Haney's and Councilmember Wyrick's comments about transparency, but I think this time is of the essence. And if we could, you have, in my opinion, I know all but one of the Boynese, which was Jim, but after hearing him tonight, I'm all for the five. It is an excellent, excellent committee that you guys appointed and I just, I'm excited for you guys just to approve this and let him get to work. And that's all I ask, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments?
Well, go ahead, please.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, you're Mayor Protem.
Randy, oh no, you're right.
Again, thank you for not calling me Paul.
We did not.
Jim, first of all, that was a, that was very well-spoken and it's clear that there's been a lot of thought in the committee's job so far as trying to formalize how this thing is going to go. We are in uncharted water from the societal standpoint, from a species standpoint, and from a council standpoint. We have to find a way, as we heard at the beginning of this meeting, to have something that helps us get these ideas vetted to us. I did watch the meeting from last, the last meeting and I did also talk to James extensively about where the, where the disagreement was amongst the council members, but it was clear that there were a lot more agreements than disagreements. I am a big believer that as much as five people may be experts and the time is important, that it's also important that not all the ideas could possibly be known to how to fix this by five people. I think that the impact of community involvement and public input on this is imperative because that's the reason why we've come up with this suggestion. I also absolutely am empathetic for the idea of getting bogged down with over, over-communication and over-input and, as you said, commentary versus, you know, more substantive kind of grinding through how to work it. And of course, we have to be respectful of that because it's part of the reason why we created the committee, right? Because we're in the same boat in trying to figure out how to vet these issues and be the best we can. The question then becomes, what is the right amount of time? It says in here that you are currently meeting bi-weekly. Jim, do you or whoever, is that still what's going on? You guys are meeting twice a month roughly? And then you were looking at potentially having a quarterly meeting that, you didn't say the specifics tonight, but I believe from what I heard before, is that what was, a potentially a longer weekend meeting? And I, somebody told me like six or eight hours, I thought that was extensive, but if that's what you guys are wanting to do.
We were prepared to spend the day.
We should come to the mic, I'm, yeah. Sorry, sorry to drag you back up here.
Sorry, we were suggesting some format, E.G., quarterly, where we would be willing to take our time for a full day to invite experts that we know in the community or just make it open to anyone who's got something to say where they want to have a conversation about it. It wouldn't necessarily, I mean, people could have commentary in that, in that format if they wish. But again, our, our listening and our, and our focus is, okay, if that's, if that's an idea, let's talk about the idea until we can get to a place to either move with it or not spend a lot of time on it.
Well, let me just say, I think that that is a wonderful idea because one of the problems we have is that when we are given information in public comment, we can't do anything. We can't, you know, we barely ask questions, we can't even have a discussion about it. And that's what we're trying to pull that restriction out of and kind of lay it in your lap. So I think that, I absolutely agree with the quarterly meetings. The only thing I might suggest is if we, if you are having bi-weekly meetings, that maybe one of those meetings or on a sporadic but consistent basis, there is just a small amount of time allocated for that because you guys can limit it to 15 minutes or 10 minutes at the beginning of a, it's just, do you foresee any problem? Because if we're talking about moving really quickly, if we don't have that input but quarterly, is that faster or is that slower?
In my, in my view, the nature of the conversations and the, and the administrative overhead to try to manage commentary and whether it's a little or a lot, you don't have much control over that, that you're basically distracting the focus from the issue that we're trying to chew on and just ending up with a fairly broad opening for a lot of random commentary. We are committed to transparency. We are, said we are welcoming anybody that wants to observe our conversations. We've invited, we, James to put our committee or the committee on the website if people have individual comments that they'd like to add. And further, we've also said after meetings, we're more than open as members of this group to take conversational discussions with people that have observed it or whatever. So in no way are we trying to thwart input, but we're trying to manage the kind of input and the format in which we have those conversations such that they have some value and they can have, not that the other doesn't have value, but that it has a particular relevance to the, to the work and the work product that we're trying to produce.
Well, let me ask you this then, just as an example, if somebody came in and wanted to talk about something that the committee felt was not on the topic that you just discussed, that you were going, you know, you were focused on one particular issue that night, but they came into a meeting and they, obviously they're allowed to be there, right? You said you were opening to the public. What would the process be? I mean, could they, could they engage with you? Would you guys tell them, well, you know, maybe, maybe they can, maybe they can, it all depends?
Well, again, we're trying to not make a rulebook out of it. We're trying to say, if you have something to say on any topic that you think's connected to the climate, any one of us as members of the committee are open and available to talk to you. So we'll get, you can do it on, after the meeting, in-between meetings, that we are interested in having those conversations. And, and we're not agreeing or disagreeing, but we're listening with an intention to either chew on it, make it relevant and engage with it or not and, and just try to maximize the time that we have available to reach consensus on whatever the issues of the day may be.
I, I am, I'm very empathetic to it. It's very difficult though, because if you have one individual, they can't go to one of these quarterly meetings or if they're on the same week every month on a Saturday and they can't do it, that's six months before their input can be involved. And that is the problem to me, that I foresee a situation where we may have limited public input over an extensive period of time.
But nothing prevents them from doing what they're doing right now, sending us all letters and laying out these thoughts and.
He's made it clear that he's available after the meeting, before the meeting, or people, that you're willing to engage with the public. I think you've made that clear. And things can happen organically. You know, one person at the meeting that wants to say something for three minutes is different if suddenly you have 10 people. So I feel like we can trust you to handle the situation in the best way possible.
That's, that's very, very aligned with our thinking in the matter. Again, even, even the topics we're working on may, may be evolving quickly depending, you know, today, you know, there was six news things I heard on KFCC and, you know, it, it changes almost every day. The Greenland ice melt today, you know, started a whole other, you know, theme.
Well, Jim, if we, if we were going to entertain some way to have a little bit more public opportunity to be engaged with the committee, what, what would, you know, do you have a vision of what that, if we just wanted to extend it a little bit more, what the committee might be palatable to be able to accept?
Well, I mean, again, I, I think this is, leaving us out of it, you know, if you just said, think about it as an entity and how do you want that entity to work? I mean, that's the decision, whether we are on it or not. However, I think that if, if, if somebody has a serious something to say and wants to have an offline conversation and it's big enough, we would expect that person to be in the meeting with us. We don't see that the meetings are all just going to be five people. If there are people that have something to contribute to the conversation, we would invite them to be there. There may be some people that we want to have a lot of conversations with, we don't know yet. We haven't gotten into the substantive work yet.
Well, let me ask you this, would you be open, do you think the, and the, the individuals who volunteered so far, I think they'd be open, that if the council requested that they hold one of their, you know, meeting during a month rather than the quarterly meeting, that they opened it up to the public? Or that if we, you know, if we said, hey, we, we really need this next meeting to be open to the public? Would that be something that?
Well, I think, I think the committee or the group should, and it would be true for us if it were, to open to any request. I think if we make it a procedural thing that's always that way, it would be a different decision than one we're recommending. So we're recommending a particular working style with the, with two thoughts in mind, that the time is of the essence and secondly, we need to deliver a work product, you know, not, not just point of views. And as, in that, in that sense, I'd say the group should be open to any request as a, as a one-off or whatever. I also think that, that we could have all kinds of atypical formats and meeting formats evolve appropriate to whatever the particular issues may be.
And that, and we, that's the flexibility of the ad hoc committee that I think we all are in agreement with.
We want to be flexible.
Yeah, I, I think we all agree with that. Okay.
Because I think we, if the committee were to be set up as proposed, then we watch and see how it works. And if it turns out that, you know, we suddenly get a, you know, a rash of complaints that this is really just a place where good ideas go to die and they can't talk to anybody, then maybe we take another look at it. that this is really just a place where good ideas go to die and they can't talk to anybody, then maybe we take another look at it. But I suspect that the committee will welcome good ideas that actually address the problem and it requires all of us to be more focused in the way we present that to, so that we don't just waste everybody's time.
Absolutely. And also that's why we suggested that it be an ad hoc committee for a fixed period of time, like six months. And then at that point, we and the council may have a totally different take on what it can and cannot do.
Mayor Johnson, I wanted, please, along the line of the same thing that Mayor Protam Blatz was talking about, would it be, would it fit within your structure to, rather than on request, stipulate over the six-month period that there be, that there be one or two public workshops or public engagement brainstorming sessions?
I think that it's a subtle distinction. So if we take literally the recommendation we're making, that would be a different recommend, you would be, you'd be changing the design.
Yeah, I'm adding something to your recommendation. Building on your community involvement paragraph.
I understand. And I would say that's perfectly feasible. Whether all of the members of the group would, would, would want to be a part of the group, depending upon how much time you were, you were, you insisting on, would be a variable. That's why I want to separate.
I didn't stipulate any kind of amount of time, just the opportunity.
I know, I know. But if, when it got down to an amount of time, then I think you, you just have to say, that's the way you want it to work. That's, that's, that's your, that's why we're here.
I just wanted your reaction to that idea.
Yeah, my reaction would be stay, stay in the domain of flexibility. Trust the committee that we're open and we need and want that commentary. And if somebody has a complaint, we're available to hear it. Or if somebody has a point of view, but nothing more than a point of view, we're open to hear it, but offline from the deliberations and the actual work that we're performing. That would be my reaction.
Well, real, just real quick, because that's right on Bill's point, if, if there were quarterly meetings that were open, that opened out, wouldn't that be two every six months?
Well, it's six months, so quarterly would be two.
It would be one every, it would be one every three months.
Right. Say, yeah, I was gonna, I was saying one or two, which we either one every, one for six months or one, or quarterly would be one every three months.
So I mean, I think, is that part of the current rec, I mean, is, is the quarterly, is the quarterly meeting part of the current recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. And so with that, would two meetings every six months under the quarterly, would that be consistent with what you were?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's part of the recommendation, so.
I think it's, if you, if I'm hearing you correctly, we are, we are recommending a day a quarter as an example. It may be two days in one quarter and six months in between.
And the only subtle distinction is being whether that's a time for people to be able to show up and be heard if they wish.
In that, in that day focus, we're fine. And we also are wanting people to come to that clearly committed to engage in a conversation.
Yes, I agree. And not just a standing up at a podium three minutes, nobody being able to do anything.
Exactly what we don't want.
I think that's much more conducive to a working group.
Yeah, that's what I mean by workshop or, you know. And then, and the other, just another aside, and I'll be, and I'm done, just commenting, and I know Randy's chomping at the bit, is that is just, I, I think we, we've learned to be very careful with groups, you know, committees, commissions, et cetera, in terms of engaging staff time. And when you say about focus areas on solutions, I, I fully agree, as long as there's a little bit of a caveat there, but before a lot of staff time is engaged, I just want to say this for the record, that the council has asked whether we want to go have that engagement or not. Because you don't want to have a lot of engagement of staff time, just in terms of managing staff time, if it's not something, not a direction that council wishes to go.
You know, partly because of, of our thinking that this is an extension of staff. In our, one of our, I think it was maybe the first meeting, I, we all invited James to be a member of the group.
Right.
And we did that not out of thinking it would increase staff time, but we saw it because we see ourselves as an extension.
And our reaction is we didn't want to compel him to have to go.
And I totally agree, he should not be compelled. But if he were a participant in the, in the group in those conversations, then we would be aligned with James and he with us.
Yeah, are his designee.
As part of the nat- natural flow.
James are his designee.
Yeah.
And by that, it's just important to stay, manage our resources and include staff time.
We totally are supporting.
But the implementation of this is, is the communication comes from the, what I like to think of as the brain trust and the filter to the council, and then the council's action, one of which is what are the resources required? What is the staff time? And then we make that decision, at which time the public should be able to see that, what decisions we're making and weigh in on the discussion.
That's right. One of the things I teach is that if you're going to make a request, you have to be willing to have a person decline. Otherwise, it's not a request.
Randy.
Now, now you guys know why I like him.
Jim and I spent, fortunately for me, we've had a deep discussion about this after the first meeting. And, and he did articulate everything that he's speaking to tonight. I, I think what we need to recognize is just the fundamentals, private versus public. And I think that's where the word transparency comes in. In a private entity, the owner of a company can take a group of people and say, form a committee and go solve these problems, come back to me. In our environment, we're doing the same thing, except we're saying the public needs to know how we're allocating and utilizing our resources. So there's a little difference between the two. That's where I think that comes into the play of when you're going to have meetings. So I completely bought into the fact that you're willing to give a Saturday. And, and I think whether it's four hours, six hours, eight hours, I think personally that you guys need to make that determination. What you need to do is just inform us so that we can post it and the community knows when, what, where, and what the discussion's going to be. I think that's a win and that, that covers the transparency for me. You're getting, we're giving more latitude to create your own hybrid quote ad hoc committee than we have any committee, any commission, anything that we've done. So it's not that we're nervous, it's as new to us as it is to you. So again, I agree with the six-month period that you come back or we evaluate it, and I think that's, I think that's a good timeframe. It also demonstrates to the community how fast you can react to climate and what is the substance that you're willing to provide us within the range of, of ideas that you're looking at. So I think it's a, I, I think it's a win here. I think it's just a matter of, when we say quarterly, I want to get back to this real quick. If you're for six months, could we say that we're going to have two Saturday meetings? And you guys make the determination as to when you want them, and then that still gives us technically a two-month timeframe for you to work and come back to council?
I, I think that's, if we're talking about the Saturday dialogue and conversation, yes, I think that that's consistent with what we're thinking. And, and that makes sense to me. I also want to mention, restate what I said earlier, which is I think it's important to maintain an ongoing dialogue with the council, that we not just simply be speaking to you in these five-minute soundbites that, that on a regular.
Get on the agenda.
On a regular basis, have some, some agenda to keep you sort of, what's going on in our thinking or what, what are, what are our top three concerns? Things like that. Some form of, you know, conversational input.
I'll make a motion if I. I had just one, one last, one last question, Mayor. And I'm glad you said that. That was my first question, is, is what's your vision of the regular part of the agenda? So again, that's something that you can work out with the, with, with the city manager.
That will be easy to do. When they have something they want to say, they do like, we did it when the drought was on and have presentations on, so the public would be informed and we would be in a position to give you feedback and make a decision.
The other comment you made was partnership with the community, and I think that's having these Saturday meetings, I think is going to be important, Jim. And also the fact that you're going to be posting on the website and should be able to interact with that. You know, with anyone that, that sees something and then can respond to the website. I, I don't know how we're going to make that interactive, but I'm sure James can make that.
I think what we heard from Jack and Jeff and, and the other two or three presenters today really speaks to the, the ubiquitous nature of the concern that everyone in the community has for this in whatever angle that they take on it. So I.
Absolutely.
Okay, Ryan, you have a motion?
Yeah, I just had one last thing.
You have one last, I thought. This is your third last.
Until, until someone tables me. And then the last one, I just.
Ryan, would you make your motion and then you can talk?
This is an important question, seriously.
I know they were all important, and you'll still be able to ask it. Let's have a motion on the floor at this point and then we'll continue with the questioning, okay?
I'll make a motion that we create the committee consistent with the recommendations with the following caveats, that it will be, that they understand that they will be subject to the city council at any point requesting that there is a public meeting, that there will be a requirement, that there are public meetings as discussed, at least quarterly, and that they will be included on the agenda as is needed to be determined through our city manager, James Vega. Doug in.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Okay, Randy.
Okay, my last question was you'd use the word advocate.
What, what word?
You used the word advocate. I get, I'm repeating his words back to him. And words are very important to Jim.
He couldn't hear.
And I would just like to understand how you see your group being advocates.
I, I think I'd use the word be a voice for. The various decisions that the council makes, they have to be implemented. So I, we would like to at least be able to contribute, if you will, agreement, alignment, additional conversation, additional thinking behind whatever sorts of things. Because many of the decisions you may have to make are not going to be popular or may not be popular. And as a consequence, if our voice and our thinking and our pre, the pre-thinking that we went into before we made the recommendation would be useful to how you roll out and how you navigate some of those.
You can help us make the case.
Yeah, exactly. And in pure sense, you are an extension of the staff and the staff makes a recommendation.
That's exactly right.
No control or authority, but simply with the, their expertise and integrity and the, and the quality of your suggestions.
Very clear, we have no control or authority.
Okay, I have something to say. You know, in a way, what we're doing here is going to be a model for other cities, okay? It's new and it's different. And I, what I would like to, I would like this, the work of this committee and the, and the people, the, the appointees, I would like them to be more prominently featured on our website because I can't find, I can't find it. I would like, you know, there.
Headshots.
We're very fortunate to have five experts that are willing to volunteer their time to serve in this capacity as an extension of staff. This is very, very, this is critical. And, you know, and we'll have your, with your permission, your email, either individually or, or there could be an email for, you know, for all of you or however you want to handle that. But I think the public, this, you know, Jeff Otterbine spoke about ringing the bell. You're ringing the bell. And we need to bring this into the forefront for 2020, so.
And if you guys stop climate change, we'll put your statues in the living room.
No, this is, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second as there is no further discussion. We don't need a roll call or anything. We just said if there's no objection to the motion.
Aye.
Very nice.
Approved, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone on the committee.
Tell your group to watch this segment, especially Jack.
Okay.
They're not a part of that group.
No, she means.
Want to keep going?
Jeff Otterbine is part of Extinction Rebellion. I think it's important. It's, it's important. Thank you. And thank you for picking up my compost.
Number five, do you want to keep going, Susan?
Yeah, I do, but I'll be quiet.
Okay, outdoor dining encroachment permits, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Let me, so this item has two parts. So I'll start with what I think is the simple one. We've talked about the outdoor dining encroachment permits and fees in the past. And just as a reminder, outdoor dining encroachment permit fees, we only have about four of them. And they are.
We're about to have more, actually. No, we're not. No, we're not. Those are private spaces.
Okay, yeah, I hadn't heard that we were having more.
No, we're not.
Um, we have four of them and what it is, what they are is when a restaurant wants to use city space for a patio, basically. That's what we're talking about here. And so the first recommendations that staff made related to these is that currently the monies collected from those permits was going to the general fund. And when we talked about this previously, we talked about designating that to the Plaza Maintenance District, which has a $50,000 shortfall, although they are catching up on that. We've looked at that. We think it makes sense. So we made the recommendation to start designating that funding to, to, to that fund. The second is, we talked about what the actual fees are and council requested information on other cities' fees. What we found, we've looked at that and what we found is that it seems that there are basically three categories. One is cities that don't issue any permits, which is Thousand Oaks, Port Wainimi, Simi Valley, and Fillmore. Cities that issue permits for a nominal fee to encourage downtown activity, such as Camarillo, Moore Park, and San Apollo, and Oxnard, who just started a pilot program. And then there are cities that charge, you know, that, it seems that they have more active downtowns and they charge more of a standardized fee, which is Santa Barbara, Ohio, and Ventura. And so we've, you know, those are kind of the groups to keep in mind. What we've found was comparing us to those other cities in that group, we have a fairly low fee. Ventura's fee for, for a permit where our fee is about $1,200, Ventura's would be $7,000 for a likewise permit. But they are by far high and above everybody else, every other city. So they are the high cat, uh, city to compare to. So we found that we, we could reduce the fee and it's something council may, or I'm sorry, increase the fee and it's something that council could consider. We also found that because we only have four of them and increasing the fee by 50%, which would probably be a large increase to the restaurateurs, would only increase revenues to the city by $2,350. So we also, you know, it's a question for council of whether that is, is valuable to the city. And with that.
Our existing fees date to 1997?
And that, exactly. That was actually what I was going to say is, I, I should have mentioned upfront, several of our fees are outdated. Several fees, many fees within the city haven't been adjusted for 20-plus years. So this is part of us looking at these fees and, and bringing them back to discuss whether it's time to increase them.
So your proposed increases are actually less than the CPI index from 97?
Correct.
So this is actually less in real terms than where we were in 97?
Yeah, CPI is 68%. We, we said 50% would be a reasonable increase.
It's very reasonable. Yeah, I, I like it.
No, I, I have one simple question is if I'm a, if I'm a restaurateur and I'm using this space and I'm paying this fee, other than increase capacity to make money, am I, does the city obligated to maintain it any differently? Do I get my, do I get my sidewalks cleaned more frequently? What, you know, what, what's the benefit for me other than making more money, but in turn I'm giving the city more taxes, so?
And, and going to the Plaza Maintenance Fund.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to say, is there, is, is that a valid question?
No, we have our public works director here as well, but I don't believe we do any additional maintenance for that cost. And in fact, the restaurateurs are kind of responsible for maintaining, or are responsible for maintaining.
I have a fault, just a question that fits right into that. What, what, if we had the extra projected, was it $2,000? Do we have any idea what that would be used for in the Plaza Maintenance District?
So at this point, there's, it's mostly that there's a $50,000 deficit in the Plaza Maintenance District, so we're still trying to make up that deficit.
And it's just the reinvesting the money back to benefit the, the merchants that are partially paid.
I understand. I, I will say that I did talk to Jamie Fleming today from the Chamber of Commerce and he was worried that a lot of the merchants weren't aware of this, but I also understand talking to staff that, I think we, the staff has communicated with, if not, all of the restaurants, is that correct?
We reached out to all four. I think we ended up speaking with all four.
Can be a lot because there are only four.
Yeah, and what was the, what was their response in general?
So Mr. Grant spoke with them. I'll, can you?
Well, he's still alive.
Can you?
A black iron.
They weren't thrilled either, but.
I was going to say he slipped in the puddle. He's really a positive person.
Can you tell us the four, the four restaurants?
Uh, yeah, the four that have the permits.
It's Sage Vine, Monte Grappa, and come on, help me.
A zoo.
A zoo. Oh, a zoo on the other side.
So those are the four we have.
That's not in the Plaza, that's not city-owned property, but it's still a permit.
Okay.
Okay, but when you say Monte Grappa, are you talking about the front or the back?
The back patio.
The back.
Or the front is at a zoo.
Monte Grappa in the back.
Okay, so when, so the only one would be a zoo where you're actually on the public right-of-way?
No, the Plaza's also public.
Well, I know.
But it's the only one on the side.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase that. By public right-of-way, I'm talking about where people are walking back and forth.
Yeah.
Sidewalk. The other ones are not a sidewalk.
Well, they're a Plaza sidewalk.
Well, they're not actually, they're an area within the Plaza.
Yeah. The reason I bring that up is because I, there can be a problem if, what happens, the, you know, the pedestrians converge, the bicycle parking converges, and then you have the tables. So I would, and once I pay the fee, if there is a problem, what happens? I'm all for it because I think that's very European pedestrian. I'm all for it because I think that's very European pedestrian-friendly. We, we want to encourage that. But I don't want, I just, and then I want to ask what, I forgot to look up what a parklet is because it mentions that. Is that where you take away a car parking spot and put the tables there?
You, you take away a car parking space and dedicate it to dining. It's sort of common in San Francisco and a few other more progressive cities.
I like that too, I like that too.
I think Pasadena does that a little bit. He, he has his office there, so.
Yeah. Okay, oh, your report, sorry.
Because we have so much parking here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you, you're going to give us a feedback.
Oh, yeah, the owner's feedback, so.
Right, okay. So we did, we did reach out to the owners and, yeah, they had basically said that the outdoor space was, they want to remind council that, that the outdoor space was not usable year-round. For instance, most of them aren't doing outdoor dining right now. It softens wet or cold throughout the winter or too hot in the middle of summer. So they have some issues with that. I think there are some people that thought we were trying to compare. I think the council's direction was ask what is the rate they're paying for the space they use, not to suggest that that be the same rate, but just kind of as a relative rate. But they were thinking maybe we were heading there and we're saying, no, we're really just trying to poll to find out what it was. We did get information back in that summary we gave you. From one of the four restaurants gave us their actual price per square foot of $1.15. The rest did not provide it. And, but we did reach out to some appraisers on what their fees were from $1.20 to $1.70 is what they noted. And with more commonly, $1.40 to $1.50. Then again, we, one of the realtors mentioned that a recent property went for $2.15. So it's very jumpy and they, I think the appraiser even mentioned that Ojai is notoriously jumpy. It's not a very consistent thing. I think when you're dealing with like a large, you know, mall property or something, it's more consistent. And then they also mentioned that it's very difficult for these small private restaurants to survive, that every fee is a big difference to their survivability. And that they might back out, one in particular thought they might back out if the fee went up too much. And then they also reminded that they do play, pay the Arcade Plaza Maintenance District fee, which all, everybody in that district pays, not just the people with outdoor dining permits. I think that was the primary summary.
And did they understand this was way less than a CPI adjustment?
Yes. And one of the restaurant owners agreed that, yeah, that seemed fair enough if there was some increase that.
Okay, and is this 200, or pardon me, $2,000 number you quoted, is that for annual?
Yes.
So, and there are four people, if it were divided equally, which it isn't because of the difference in the size, it would be $500 each. So three of them are paying less than 500 and one gets hit for a little more than that. And I guess we, when we're talking about giving money to the chamber to promote commerce, I'm not sure that we're doing anybody a favor by, you know, unless there is a fairness issue. Bill, I think you did bring that up at one point, what is the fairness? But are there other people who are not having the same, or, or want the opportunity that aren't getting it? Or I'm not sure. I, I agree with Bill's thinking, we haven't done it in 20 or 30 years, you know. Then maybe was the original fee not properly set or how could we go that long?
Let's just stipulate it was okay in 97, so let's do a cost of living adjustment.
I guess, you know, in some ways, I guess, but I don't know what the sales tax is on the space, but we probably are money ahead right now.
It's not a ton, but the question is, I mean, we, the only other thing we really could do if we decided we wanted to increase it is to do some sort of annual percentage increases over the next number of years to bring it up, rather than do it all at once because it's a 50% increase. But I mean, it's not that much. And if they have, if they're smart, they'd rather have it not, I mean, because if we compound like 5% for 10 years, it could be a lot more than 50%. Or if we even compound, I think 2% roughly, right, it'll be more than that over 10 years.
We're talking 20 years or?
Yeah, I know, and then you add that and if you compound it that whole time, it'll go way up. So, I mean, maybe a flat rate increase now is better that they'd understand. But I, I know that, like I said, Jamie with the chamber said there, there would be some concern, but, you know, he, he, he didn't say anybody might necessarily go out of business.
I have a question, Mayor.
Right.
So we're talking two, we're, we're talking $2,000. Addition, but if, as I, as I see above it, it says here there's a $453 one-time permit fee. Correct? And then below it is a 2,082 one-time license agreement fee. Is that all part of this?
So that's Ventura's permit costs.
Okay, that's not our, okay. I thought, I thought you, I thought that was.
That's not our proposal.
Okay, so from a small business standpoint, I understand how difficult this would be, whether it's $500 or $2,000, I, I get that. Right now, the only person that's using a public right-of-way is Azu, correct? Or do they pay an encroachment fee right now for the use of our sidewalks? Or is that their space in front of their restaurant that they're using?
So Azu is complicated. They're encroaching in Caltrans right-of-way, so they pay a reduced fee for that is what's proposed here is that it's a.
Well, no, not what? What are they doing presently?
Right. Right now, they pay the fee as laid out there on page five.
Do they pay that to us or to Caltrans?
My understanding is that there's an informal agreement by which Caltrans has allowed us to regulate Azu's use of their Caltrans-owned right-of-way. We charge a regulatory fee for Azu's use of it. We can't charge a rental fee because we don't own that land. However, the other three restaurants, we own the land, so we can charge both a regulatory fee and a rental fee. As set by council.
That, that's one of my concerns is if we're lumping Azu into the four and then we're requiring them to take their money and provide it to the maintenance district, what's the benefit for them?
There's a footnote on there that only the properties within the maintenance district could put the money to it. The other one would not, it would go to general fund.
So Azu. And I should mention that, so Azu, yeah, they have, there is, there's been some issues. You know, we have to set parameters, I think was brought up before, how much area is allowed on the sidewalk to make sure we get free, you know, pedestrian access throughout there. And we have to sometimes enforce that, push it back, and Caltrans has pushed on us to make sure that's enforced.
The Gelato Place hasn't put any.
Do we want staff to come back and give us some cost increases if we go with Ryan's plan of incrementally increasing this over the next 15 or 20 years?
Well, Ryan wasn't suggesting that.
Well, I mean, it's an option. The only thing I'll say is by the time we're done, we're going to spend more than 2,300 in staff time.
Yeah, staff time, I.
That's the only problem, this is so little money.
They recommend we leave it alone.
Well, again, to me, a short term, long term. So again, the short term is, yeah, we may spend a little more, but in the long term, we get caught up into date and that this doesn't come back to council again. But I'm just asking that, we don't have to do it.
I, I was, I'll just make a motion now, just for, so we can get a discussion.
Yeah, make a motion.
I, I'm going to make a motion to, in, in light of the fact it's so far below the CPI adjustment over the time period, that we go ahead and approve recommendation number two and three. And I really like the idea, editorial comment of dedicating the, the Plaza to the Plaza Maintenance District. That's my motion.
You have a second?
To approve our recommendations two and three.
I'll, I'll second it for further discussion.
Okay, move and second it, okay.
No, I, I, I'm just going to say, this is so little money, I'd rather kick the can down the road on this and do it some other time. I, I just, not that there's a wonderful reason for that and not that I disagree with anything you said. I just think, we have a number of taxes.
I just want to get to a vote.
No, I agree with you, I, I totally understand. We just have a number of taxes that are coming down the road. I'd rather wait to see how those pan out before we increase those.
I can go either way, I just want to make a motion so we vote on it.
No, I'm with you.
It's as nice as we can disagree. Violently agree.
The other thing is.
I would concur with Paul, Paul.
Thank you, Jim. Call me Mary twice. Call me P Protem, it'll be easier.
There is something else that we need to consider. The, you know, these fees may not have increased, but their rent, the rent has increased.
Substantially.
Huge, substantially, so that is a, a factor. So I would be very careful about adding.
Ready for, for vote?
What are we voting on?
We're, what are we voting on? We're voting on the motion that Bill made, which was to approve recommendations two and three. And it's a money issue, so we take a roll call, roll call please.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
No.
May, Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
I'm alone.
But you were clear, you were not.
Did clear the issue.
That was not a hard no. Nobody, nobody should consider that a real no.
Made a decision.
Next item, we have the emergency communication.
Could I, could I ask that we maybe approve just recommendation two by motion? To allocate it to the, the existing to the Plaza Maintenance.
That's fine with me, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I definitely agree with you.
I'm making that motion.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Does that require individual votes?
Well, we should, it's money.
Yes, it does, yeah. Good call, though.
You ready for the, ready for a roll call?
Yeah. Let's see if we get the names right.
No pressure. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay. You weren't totally, shut up, Will. For all that work, you got something, good. Emergency communication signboard, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So this is a big topic that I am sure will elicit a lot of various responses. But it's the, we talked last year about the idea of a, of a signboard for various uses. In recent months, we've seen a lot of changes, including public safety power shut-offs, which were not a reality last year when we discussed this item. And so recently, council has indicated a desire to, to discuss this project and the possibility of, of moving it forward. The item is placed on the agenda basically to do that, just to, you know, it's a big topic that we could spend, you know, we can spend a lot of time designing and everything else. At this point, it's put on the agenda basically to decide, do we want to move forward with it or not? Because we've discussed it in the past and we've, we've never really made that decision. Last year, when we talked about it, budget was an issue. Budget is still an issue, however, I think this is the type of project that would be a, a good project if Measure C passes or if grant funding becomes available. So we could discuss moving it forward on that basis. My recommendation, if we move it forward, is that it would, is to bring it to the Disaster Council, which includes the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, and the Public Works Director, and have the Disaster Council make design recommendations about what they would like to see to, to really be able to make this a true emergency communication signboard. So the item is on basically with the recommendation to make a decision on whether to proceed or not and then to, to ask the Disaster Council to, to design.
But the, the referral to Disaster Council would be to, I guess, be a two-part question. One, is this something that has been effective in other places? And should we recommend to the council to proceed? And then secondly, if so, what would, how would it be designed and where would it go? Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I, I don't want to belabor this, but I completely concur with, except I, I want to make sure we're not eliminating possible locations for the evaluation of the Fire Safe Council. You mentioned the Y near Rotary Park, Boku. Is there any reason why we wouldn't at least put on the table for the Fire Safe Council to consider the Pocket Park where the Children's Memorial is and also where the Christmas tree is?
I would, I'll make a motion to, to refer this to Disaster Council to evaluate purpose, place, size, cost implications.
Without limitation.
Yeah, without limitation and then get back to us.
Yeah, I'll second.
And I'd, I'd say one, okay, we have a motion and a second. We also need to, well, that when we call, talk about a marquee, marquees are usually more like, you know, Grauman's Chinese Theater. It's, it's a commercial use, no, nothing wrong with that. But if that's what we want to do, then that's not a Disaster Council thing. But it seems like most of us had some interest in this on the basis that during an emergency, or as the City Manager points out, now that we have these situations where power is shut off anticipating a possible emergency, that it's really a, a public message board, you know, for, and, and so I think that's, at least, that'll, those will be the kind of guidelines I will take to the Disaster Council unless the council, well, and then when it comes back to us, we can decide if that's adequate.
So Mayor, I just would like to add to it. You know, we did vet these, this signage on the Libby Bowl Committee and we have drawings and markups and we have a lot of additional information that James should have that he can give to you.
Yeah, I do have it.
Because we did a lot of research on signage and different types of signage. It can't be, one of the things I read in here, someone will go out and change the sign. You don't want a mechanical, you want an electronic.
It needs to be a web-based.
You do.
You've got to have something that, that can, that can respond.
Maybe an override onsite in a disaster, but.
Yeah, that can respond to the disaster or the incident as it happens, so. But we have that information and, and I think that should be a part of your package.
Sure, okay. Okay, is there further?
Obviously, I know we've colloquiumed this in emergency signage, but I wouldn't want us to limit the number of things we can do with it considering how many different things we do with the Mobile Sheriff's Department sign and other things like that. And obviously, we don't have emergencies every day, but we always have something else going on. Secondly, I think it's what you, what was just said, but we need to have a way that's even more than it being web-based and that it has to directly connect and be sufficient in an emergency, even without electricity, that from the EOC, we can operate it. Not from City Hall, but from the EOC as well. We've got to have that connectivity because if we're in an emergency and we're hunkered down in there, that's the spot where we want to get that out. And then I don't know if it's important, but I have a dish, so I don't know what Channel 8 looks like anymore. But I don't know what, I don't know if that, that as well, if there's any, I don't know if those two things need to be coordinated.
There might be line of sight communication, it can be studied to see.
Yep. Any of that, that whole thing. But I, I'd want to make sure, because it may increase the budget substantially, but we got to know what it would take to make sure we can use it in the EOC in an emergency.
Okay.
I also enjoy the fact that you're going to be looking into grant funding regarding safety, fire, and any of those related words that might benefit us.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we will, and James, you get a.
Well, I will say this, is there anybody who thinks that that's not the best location, the only location to consider? I mean, I, the Y? I mean, because we're really looking at any kind of spot at the Y or Boku. And, but we've talked about the Bowl and downtown seems, you know, if there's an emergency, the whole East End is never going to get to the Y, right?
It's the most concentrated traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying it's not. And anybody from Miners Oaks or coming into the valley from that side of the.
This is why this discussion can, can go a lot of different ways.
Yeah, so let, yeah, oh, yeah, and then you get into the whole risk management things. You do realize we as the, the fathers and mothers of the community, when there is a disaster, there's a history, like when dams have given way and criminal charges filed. So the risk management of a lot of this stuff that occurs, they immediately start auditing everything. Well, what was on the message board? You know, was it in bilingual? Was it, you know, where was it positioned? Was it negligently or inadequately vetted? You know, I mean, once you get into this area, I use the analogy in the insurance business, is if you're driving down the coast and you come across a rocky, craggy beach, no signs or anything, and you go in at your own risk. If, if the county or the Parks Department puts a sign up, you know, dangerous surf like in Hawaii or something, now you've acknowledged it's a dangerous place and now you have liability for putting the sign up. So this thing, we, we will get into in depth when we get to the Disaster Council. So then, you know, because there's a big difference between commercial use and the emergency government.
You know, Mayor, there's also the risk management side of it with the California Chamber. You know, California Cities, League of California Cities. I'm sure that, that, that their risk management division has looked at a lot of this. So that would be another place to actually go and get some insights.
City of Camarillo has one in front of City Hall too, if you need to ask them any questions to get some information. And they have a design too that's not quite like these ones on here, not that it's better, it's just different. And, and we also, you know, as I said, the connection from the EOC to that sign, it may be considered if we can do that because Nordoff has a sign as well. And that's a disaster area. I don't know if, if we're, you know, if we're investigating that, it might be worth investigating whether we can get control of that sign in emergency from the EOC.
Yep.
Okay, so without objection, and James, will you arrange for a Disaster Council meeting early in January, if not before? Okay. Okay, we are getting close to the end of the agenda, but before we get into reports, I want to express my.
Yes, taser time, ah.
Yes.
I expressed my, my sadness. Your turncoat.
A TO, no less.
Well-deserved motion and we're sorry to see Chief Reihoff. Well-deserved motion, and we're sorry to see Chief Reihoff. But you'll come visit us. And my understanding is, is that you are going to come back in January for, uh, an item on the agenda, at which time we can laser, or taser you properly.
Yeah, I'll be back at the January meeting so that you can give your last shot.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay, and thanks for all that you've done for us. You really made a difference.
You've set a really good example for your successor.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I've had a lot of people in the community comment that you're leaving, and all are, you are going to be sorely missed. I mean, really. I, I've had more people come, I, people who from, from the, um, uh, because I know you were on Thanksgiving, you were out at the, uh, the homeless shelter, I know a lot of them who commented on it. Um, really, I mean, it's kind of amazing how many people, and just since it's been announced, have, uh, public have, you know, and, and we know it here, obviously, but seriously, uh, thank you. And thank you, this has been a, a, a great assignment, I'm sorry, ready to go.
Just, um, real quick, when a public servant serves the public as well as you have, that's why you're going to be missed. You've just done an incredible job.
Yeah. Thank you very much, it's been an honor to serve this community, uh, this was one of my dreams, right? I, this was my first patrol station, uh, so I wanted to come back and be the chief, and I've had that opportunity. Thank you for giving me that opportunity, and, uh, this has been a blessed three years. I'm going to miss it a lot.
Staff's been fantastic under you, too.
When I first got on the council, we had public comment and complaints and things, and a lot of them were just misguided or misstated, but we had them. And since you and your, uh, the rest of your staff over there started, you know, Coffee with the Chief and all of the outreach and the rest of it.
Walking around.
It's really, you know, that people are not as willing on, uh, social media to, if less, your presence on social media to believe every rumor that came down the pipe.
No, and I, I'm actually writing an article, and I'm going to work with Austin about, uh, a project that, like I said, is going to be unveiled at the next meeting in January, but I, uh, community outreach, right? We had a, uh, a twelve-year-old girl who volunteered to paint a mural inside the station. And it started because of some work I was doing inside the station to try and build the morale and, and make people understand how unique Ojai is, and make the deputies feel good about where they work and when they come to work that this is, they spend a lot more time here than they do at home, I guarantee it. And, uh, she did a wonderful job and just finished, uh, a couple of weeks ago, so I've got a great article, but I talked about that, uh, communication and how key it was when I got here, doing Coffee with the Chief, Citizens Academy, uh, writing in the Hub, uh, being available for the news, uh, having a good Facebook presence to be able to address things, because oftentimes, I found that people are willing to think bad things about us if they don't know what we're doing and why we're doing it. And a lot of us, we're just a very poor salesman at what we do, and once we explain why we've done something or why we're doing it, then people have an understanding of, of it and can be much more supportive of it, because they understand the challenge that we face. But I think in absence of that communication, they tend to think the worst in what we're doing rather than giving us the benefit of the doubt, and I think that I've been able to show why we've earned the benefit of the doubt and why we're really here for your benefit.
Yeah.
Uh, you've done a terrific job at it, and see you, see you in January.
Thank you.
You'd be off duty, or at least...
Well, yeah, never off duty as a chief, no matter what city you're in, you don't ever stop.
Okay, we feel much safer that you'll, you can, okay, let's, uh, go to, uh, what do we have? Council reports, uh...
I'm going to, um, well, I was, um, two things, uh, Gold Coast is, uh, and the, uh, Bank of Santa Barbara, worked together to actually, um, uh, what's that, where you take the vinyl and you vinyl your car, you vinyl your, but they vinyl?
Wrapped.
Yes, they wrapped a bus.
Oh, right.
Um, a Christmas bus, and it was incredible. I mean, it was just beautiful that they did it, but that's a lot of money to do to wrap a bus. Um, and it just, it's Christmas holiday and it's inside and out, and it's just, it was just beautiful. So, of all the things that happened on, uh, on the meetings I attend, that was probably one of the nicest. Um, and I was, um, appointed, uh, what, the next guy in, uh, in Gold Coast to be, uh, chair for next year, so...
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, so that was fun.
Yeah.
You can drive a bus now?
Um, well, you know, one of the, one of the commissioners actually got in and got his picture taken, I thought that was funny. I went, "Don't quit your daytime job, buddy," but, um, um, but he, uh...
Happy John, was it Zergosa?
Um, no.
Because John, I think, used to be a bus driver back in the day.
No, yeah, well, he's been, John's been around a long time.
Yeah, he's good.
So, other than that, that was, I think that was the...
That was the highlight?
That was the highlight for the week.
Mayor Protam?
All right, well, I, I had an APCD, Air Pollution Control District, meeting today, as well as a Steering Committee meeting. Um, I, I just want to really, Lackey, who is the new, uh, Director, Officer, has really been fantastic. He's filled in, uh, really well, uh, after Mike Viegas was gone. Uh, he will be here on Thursday, and I think James is going to talk about it in the, uh, what is it? The, the deconstruction?
Dismantling, isn't it?
Dismantling event that we're having, and, and James and I, I, I did tell him today, we're trying to set up a meeting, and as Steve Colman, uh, highly suggested, we sit down and really grind through some things we can get grants for and things that might be happening around here and work with Lackey, and I think some of those ideas, too, may be able to shuffle their way into the Climate Committee, if that's an option as well. Uh, the other thing I will say is that at that meeting, the last V-Cog meeting I was at, um, where the, the sheriff was there, uh, I just, again, not just Eugene, but the whole Sheriff's Department, and, and I, you know, I work in the legal field and, and, and the forward thinking and modern thinking that our Sheriff's Department is showing on homelessness and a lot of different issues is really refreshing, and it's really amazing. Uh, it's not the stodgy old, we just do things the way we do it. There's a lot of forward thinking and a lot of really bright people, uh, who have the community at heart, and it is not nearly as adversarial as it's been in the past, and it's just really refreshing. Um, but that argument, or I should say his discussion, immediately devolved into just a hemp discussion by all of the different city council people who were there at, uh, APCD today, they talked about hemp. I know there was, supervisors were, had a, I, I'll, I don't know what happened, so if you have an update. Um, but we have informed everybody, we were ahead of it, but there's a lot of new information coming out on that. And the, um, oh, and, and lastly, at V-Cog, it looks like, uh, and League of California City's saying the same thing, uh, it looks like everything's almost done as far as rain and numbers, and we pretty much know where we're going to be.
We're a lot better off.
Yeah, and we're not as, not as scared as we might have been.
Because we engaged, we're better off because we engaged.
It's a, it's a, a big improvement, yeah.
But on, on the hemp issue, we definitely were ahead of all the other cities, uh...
Yeah, when James went down to the first meeting, we were, you were the Maytag repairman, weren't you? There was nobody there, and now suddenly Moore Park and others are saying, "Would you support us?" Yeah, well...
Mayor, can I touch on something that Ryan touched on real quick, the, uh, on the APCD? Um, when I was, uh, the VCTC was talking about, uh, reducing a route on the Vineyard in Auctionard, and one of the questions that, that I asked was regarding air quality, because it was an Air Quality Resource Board grant, and I would just ask them, what was the funding, you know, if, for receiving that money? What did they have to demonstrate regarding air quality? And the fact that they didn't surprised me, but the discussion continued, and they said that APCD, and there's another funding mechanism, um, that you can go to to get grant funding for these monitors. So, I thought that that would be something that, that I'll get more information on and share it with Bill and, um, Sousa regarding some of their pesticide, uh, concerns and drift in air quality. But the fact that there is funding for these to enhance monitoring of your, um, air quality in your specific region. And APCD was one of the grants they talked about.
Is VCTC or...
Ventura County Sanitation.
Or the Gold Coast, or is anybody, uh, specing and, uh, getting ready to go electric with the buses? Dick Baldwin was promoting.
Gold Coast just put in their, um, you know, they just put in that, they're a natural gas plant, and I think it's 2050 that they have to be electric, all of them.
They're going to wait that long, no?
Well, I'm sure, would they just put millions of dollars into this plant, they're going to try and get some return on all these buses.
Yeah, well, they need...
But, yeah, they have to, it's, it's, it's a mandate.
Uh, one, just, just because of that, one thing at APCD I learned today is that hemp does, uh, actually is a, it causes what are called VOCs, which are, uh, volatile organic compounds that ultimately can turn into pollution. And there is a concern, especially if they're located near areas where there's high traffic, the terpenes in the hemp tend to, will combine with it and, and can cause pollution. So, APCD has no jurisdiction over the hemp, because that is strictly with the AI Commissioner, but they are looking into it, and it is a future concern on their models of some of this ozone situation, um, and, or other, I should say, not necessarily ozone, but, uh, these compounds that are created, which include ozone. So, it's just another issue that I want to make sure everybody's aware of, doesn't mean that hemp is bad, just means it's one of the things that's concerned.
Right.
Okay, Sousa?
Oh, Bill and I met with, help me out here, with Val Dulcini.
Yes. The Deputy Director of the Department of Pesticide Regulation, I believe, right?
And, uh...
Land Commissioner and his deputy and, you know...
So, is that that private meeting that you guys had?
Yeah, yeah, there were about fifteen people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, and, and we decided...
Farmer and Cook.
We decided not to rush, the, we, the, we were going to bring the letter back this meeting, but we decided that we have so much information to process and things are happening, um, that we, we're going to bring it back first meeting in, in January.
Due diligence.
Yeah.
Bill?
Uh, real quick, uh, one, a couple of things of information coming down from the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. One is, uh, and they're both related to Harrison. Harrison has, uh, invested millions of dollars in upgrading their recycling, I think you had a tour. And the, the point is, the public really needs to be encouraged to, to not just all the, be negative about how there's no markets for recycling. They're getting the quality of their sorting up to the point where they're opening up new markets. And, uh, so it's not all doom and gloom as it's been. It, there's, it's looking better than it has in terms of markets for recycling, where it doesn't have to go to landfill. And the state is also, I have, I believe I have, have a new director in the agencies that are responsible for developing markets for recycled project, uh, products, so, recycled materials, so things are looking a little better there, and, um, I, I know that, um, uh, I don't know to what extent is going on behind the scenes, but certainly, there is, I believe, increased continued focus on the, uh, our local organics. Ojai Valley Organic shutdown and the need to find a way of at least collecting and processing local...
Open it?
Yeah, I think, so that's, I think, I know Harrison's involved in those discussions as well, other groups with the county. So, I think that's moving along. And then, uh, the Economic Development Collaborative is, is, uh, continuing to get new funding for the broadband consortium that we've really kind of delegated to the Chamber to try to find a way of implementing in this community, and so I think that's also moving along.
Okay, okay. Mr. City Manager, do you have...
Yeah, I have a couple of quick things, if you'll indulge me. Uh, first, that was mentioned was the dismantling event is going to be held Thursday at 1:00 PM. That's the final step in our, uh, Green Zone Certification Grant.
Is that, is that here, James?
It's going to be here, right on the lawn. We originally were planning to drive a bolt...
1:00 PM, sorry, 1:00 PM, Thursday?
Yeah, 1:00 PM.
Here, not Libby's.
Here.
Here.
And, uh, we originally were going to drive a bulldozer all, over all the equipment, and then realized that the bulldozer's diesel, so...
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, I, I was going to say, yeah.
We had to tone it down a little bit.
Couldn't find a steamroller to rent?
That's what I said, electronic or something, but...
Battery-powered, yeah.
Yeah, so our idea right now, we're going to use some electric drills and, and, uh, drill through them, which, you know, it's not as fun, but, uh...
And shred them.
You're all welcome to, uh, to grab a drill.
We can all, we can all do some drill jobs.
So, 1:00 o'clock, uh, Thursday. The, um, the other note, I wanted to make the new recreation guides out now, and I wanted to mention it because the hot topic at the rec, uh, joint meeting with the Rec Commission was the Ghost Tours, and there, which sold out in, you know, fifteen minutes or whatever, and we are doing another one in March, and that's in that recreation guide. Um, Randy especially seemed excited.
It, it, I thought it was a new craze that's been going on a long time.
Apparently, yeah.
Catch up.
And then, uh, just, um, hemp, uh, was on the Board of Supervisors' agenda today. Unfortunately, it was still going when we came in, so I don't have, have the latest update, but we, we had city representatives speak.
Good.
Uh, and then, lastly, just as, uh, one thing, one habit I'm trying to get into is note, a couple items we're working on for the next meeting, obviously, things are always, you know, we move things around and everything, but we're trying to get the pesticide letter back on January fourteenth, the small engine prohibition discussion on January fourteenth, the regional board assignments, um, the accessory dwelling unit changes by state law, which is going through PC right now, it's, it's, uh, been discussed at the most recent PC meeting. And then, finally, the, uh, a six-month report back on the Chamber of Commerce, um, agreement. So, those are the, the big items we're working on.
And what is the status on the general plan update?
Oh, yeah. So, we have a meeting on Monday, it's the, um, the Get Coordinated meeting, and then we're going to, at that meeting, co- uh, coordinate the kickoff meeting for the, for the entire city.
Okay, and, uh, the, uh, efforts with the housing authorities, possibly to build the five to seven units, whatever, on our lot, is that...
Yes, so, we have a, um, in, I think it was on the January twenty-eighth is what we're aiming for. We're trying to get a couple of affordable housing groups to come in, um, Cabrillo and, and another one, to come in and, and, uh, kind of have a affordable housing workshop, and we're thinking about trying to kind of loop all these in. We hadn't moved forward, um, as quickly as, as I think we had hoped on the five to seven unit, because we were trying to wrap it into a couple other projects we were doing, but we're, we're kicking off now, so...
Okay, very good.
Oh, Mayor.
Okay.
Future agenda items.
Future items.
Future items.
I just want to say, that ties into the, the agenda that he was talking about, is, um, Bill and I have been working diligently, because we've made that agreement for two council members to bring something to council that we need to do the homework. So, we have worked hard on this, uh, the Ci- the City of Ojai Solar Initiative. We're ready for the white paper, and we're ready to actually do some really good things and do a great presentation. So, James, can you, um, if not the first, um...
Sometime maybe the second January?
Yeah. Um, I know there's a lot, it seems like there's a lot on the first one, so the second one might, just, we need to get in, we need to get slotted, because it's a, it's going to be a great discussion.
On the solar.
Be a lot of good information shared.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're aiming to try to get that back ASAP, too.
Okay.
Okay, agenda items besides that one?
So, the one, and, and then one other thing is, and I'm sure, um, Jamie, are you here to speak on, on, um, or are you just here to listen?
I'm here to listen.
Okay, so, the other thing I'd like to do is, is... We had a, um, we had a request to, uh, name the, uh, walkway between the Art Center and Libby Park, and I'd like to bring that back onto the consent item for, uh, January. And there were two requests, I'm under the standing, is one for the bridge and one for the, the walkway.
I could defer, defer that to the city manager to study.
Yeah, well, I, I will second bringing it back.
Didn't the previous city councils send this someplace, or did, either to the staff or a commission to, to, for the guidelines? This is, this is a, has been an issue in every town I've ever been in, plus every uni- university I've attended, uh, when we get into naming rights, we, uh...
But I'd like to, I think the city manager can...
I think we ought to take a look at the process.
Yeah, and they, to answer that question, the Rec Commission...
Yes.
Yes, I was going to say.
A few months back made a naming policy recommendation, so we could bring that, we could bring that back.
Okay.
Both the general and the specific.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's sort of in the queue at some point, okay, Mayor Protam?
Nothing else.
Nothing else, nothing?
Okay, uh, so, it looks like January fourteen is already very full. I do, would like to, um, I don't know quite how to, what to call it, but the Earth Friendly Management Policy for Ojai, and then I want to call your attention that I did ma- uh, email, I had, um, Louise distribute the ordinance that, um, the city, the Malibu City Council adopted yesterday, and then there was an amendment to that, some clarification, and it really is very, as much as you can legally do, you know...
And they did this on their own properties, is that right?
Yes, but even, they went beyond that, I have to really look at the language, that you can't say...
Stand up a little bit on discretion, are you trying to say?
Yeah, they did.
They're going to have a legal challenge.
Yeah, but, uh, it's, it's something to really, you know, they've done a lot of work, this has been years in the making. They were, they came to Ojai two years ago, remember we had that, um, Town Hall with the, with the Cougar film and all that?
The Gap That Changed the Nation.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, as soon as you can put that on the agenda...
Yeah, I mean, the effort was mainly focused at redentations.
Yeah, but it was...